The United States of America, in the Republic from which this stands, one nation undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, are we online? I see we have some people. I see we have some people online also. Let's look at the agenda confirmation right now. We want to change our agenda real quickly. We are going to, obviously, the board knows, we are going to move our closed session to right after the Pledge of Allegiance, or after the agenda confirmation, I guess, and go from there. So we're going to go into closed session. Anything else to change on the agenda? We might have to move a couple of things around if we go too long, but otherwise we'll try to stay on schedule. Okay, entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the change for closed session.
I'll move to do that.
Okay, motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we need a motion to go into closed session due to negotiation strategy developments, discussion and review labor negotiation proposal.
So move.
Pursuant to 179A, 10179A, 25.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So we are now into closed session. Yes, Brian?
For number eight on the, from the top there, where it says, the city, what's that?
Yep.
Where the city of Detroit Lakes paying their share, do we want their share in there or do we know what their share is?
Maybe their portion.
Their portion.
Seventy percent, I believe it was.
I think it was seventy percent, wasn't it? That's what I thought. So maybe their portion of seventy percent or something like that.
Which is, okay.
That's all I had. That's all I had.
Yeah, we're ready.
Yeah.
Not sure yet.
Carrie, on number, page three of four, on number three or number four, motion to second to approve capital purchase bike path, and just mentioned it was at Dutton Locks pathway. Page two of four, number, on the very top, number four, it's clarification of claim to pay to Bad Boys, I don't think that's necessary to be in the minutes, anyone. Just eliminate number four completely. And then under open for, or under, number two on, on page one of four, under Commissioners, number two Fair Board Report, put a bullet point in there, they review, they reviewed the possibility of having extension in the transit building.
Mm-hmm.
I think that was an important point. Anyone else have anything under the minutes?
Oh.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, anything in consent agenda that, or I don't see anything need to be pulled today?
No.
Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Again, thank you all for coming this morning. We got through some regular business and we had to move our closed session first because our consultant, and that was for our labor negotiations, could only be here immediately this morning, his schedule conflicted, so he was online with us. So now we are going to move into the section of open forum. If you wish to speak on the, if you're here to speak about the zoning issue, about, I think it's the gas station, I think we will allow you to speak at that time. If you prefer, if you have, if you can't make it at that time and wish to speak now, we certainly can entertain you to speak at this time, so you have, get your voice heard. But if you want to speak on that, you could just wait till that portion of the day, because then everyone will be in the room for, to hear your concerns. So I'm going to say your name, if you wish to wait until later, you certainly can, and if you wish to speak now, you can do that now. But I encourage you, if you're here to speak about the, the, the gas station, it'd probably be best to do it at that time if you're available, because that's when the, the rest of the people will be in the room. So with that being said, Marcia?
I'll wait.
Okay. Next one looks like it's next to our scribbled out, Marge? Is it Marge, Mary? Marge, is it?
Oh, Mary.
Mary? Oh, sorry, Mary? Sorry, you got the little. Sheila?
I'll wait.
Is this a daggett? Amber?
I have a quick question, so it's going to start at 10:45?
Yes.
Okay, we'll deviate from that?
We will move that at that exact moment.
Okay, I will wait and I will come back.
Okay. Is there anyone else on open forum? Yes.
Yes.
Oh, you're up on number five. Yes, Ann?
I will wait.
Okay. There's one other, is there? I can't, there's one name, Delta?
Delta's a daggett, yeah.
Did you wish to speak now or you wish to wait? You can do.
I'll wait. I'd rather speak now, but I'll wait.
Okay. And the reason for that, the, the other side will be here to hear your concerns, and I think that's important to hear the concerns. So if you choose to speak now, you're welcome to, but we can wait. I will allow, and I don't want ongoing and ongoing and the same, but you certainly will have your chance to speak. So if, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Open forum.
I will at 10:45.
Yes, if you wish.
Do you need our name on?
No.
Okay.
No. I will just, you will just continue to come up and, so nobody here on open forum for any other matters. So we'll move on and we will probably get through our agenda by that time, hopefully. Reports and correspondence.
I'll, I'll go first. Becky's here, so. So my first one is the Historical Society, and anyway, I went to the Da Vinci exhibit on Sunday and it was unbelievable. It was amazing. Everybody needs to go see it. That is cool. Now, I'm a history buff, so I have bias, but it's, yeah, it's pretty impressive. But anyway, I'm sure it'll draw people to Detroit Lakes, so. And then the, the next thing that I have about the Historical Society is about when we, when Becky came here, when we did a grant for the Da Vinci exhibit, the city also was going to, was looking into doing a grant to help reduce the cost for Detroit Lakes students. So they have done that, and Becky's here to give us some information about that, and we had said that we, when the city had done something, we would look and decide if we wanted to do something, so. Thanks, Becky.
Morning, Becky.
Morning. Thank you.
And for those in the audience, this is Becky Mitchell, the Director of our Becker County Museum.
Thank you. Yeah, so just a little follow-up, the Da Vinci exhibit did open on Sunday. We did battle the nice weather a little bit, which is understandable, but people have been calling like crazy to get information. We even had somebody from California trying to. Oh, wow. Arrange some travel plans to come, so very interesting in that regard, but I am here to follow up. So both the city of Detroit Lakes and, and Becker County sponsored the exhibit at the 5,000 level. I was invited back to the city to talk about the DL school students in particular, so that would be Detroit Lakes Public Schools, Holy Rosary, Faith Christian, and then any homeschoolers out there. We don't know those numbers, or at least I don't know a way to get those numbers, but they, they came back. The number without the homeschoolers was if they sponsored, which is what they ended up doing, $2 off the ticket, making a $5 student price $3, was $5,882, which is what they did do with the assumption that any homeschoolers would kind of be rolled into that number. So then the conversation we had at the county level was talking about perhaps the rest of the county. So if you take Lake Park, Audubon, Frazee, Circle of Life, and Waban Oguma, Oguma's in the county, Waban's not, but they're the same district, those numbers come up to just shy of 2,500, 2,443. Again, you roll in some homeschool students out there, and it's probably about the same. So I'm just back to kind of give an update on that and see if there's any consideration. Commissioner Meyer asked me to come this morning and talk about that.
So you're requesting an additional $5,000?
Yeah, I'm requesting whatever you would like to consider, I guess, but yeah, if we wanted to keep it consistent, it would be about $5,000, and then it would just be anybody in the county.
Do you track, you track the students?
Student-wise. We track, yes, so we track the students from a admission level, if they were coming in, say, on the weekend with their parents, or if they're coming in versus a school group, we track all of those numbers.
Would it, if you're tracking, if you're tracking them, we could, I mean, do you want to, what, I don't know, what are the thoughts of the board? You could do it one of two ways. You could, if you're tracking them, ought to, and you, once you run out of the Detroit Lakes money, you could start adding the $2 off, and we could pay the difference of any student that, up to $5,000?
We could, we could do, I, I see where you're going. So at the end, I could come back and say, well, we had this many students attend. I do know the Detroit Lakes money, they, you know, they wanted specific to Detroit Lakes students, but, but I can do, I can certainly do that.
Are you going to, are you going to ask for IDs then?
No, but they come in. So the conversation was that they came as a school group, but you're opening up kind of another avenue, which is if they, if it's anybody, if they come with mom and dad on the weekend, do we, do we count that in the same vein, which?
So you're saying that, that you're going to ask every student that comes in if they're homeschooled in the Detroit Lakes School District?
Oh, usually those groups, similar to a classroom book at the same time, it's not usually like one family comes now, one family comes later. They usually do come as a group, so we would treat them that way, same way.
I don't know. What's the board? Richard?
Well, we got students in Audubon and Lake Park, too.
And Frazee.
Yeah, so I mean, if we're going to do something for students, we should do it county-wide.
I agree.
So.
Well, yeah, Detroit Lakes is tried earmarked for the Detroit Lakes school system. Are you looking to, are you, the request is, are we ruling to pony up the money for the rest of the county?
I guess I am, if they want to see the Da Vinci exhibit.
You got Frazee also.
Yeah, Frazee also.
Don't forget them. I do have the breakdown of numbers, if you'd like them, but they do total 2,443, so.
So that, that would be the amount for 2,443, unless you want to do it the different, I don't, I guess I don't know the way, be the best way.
I mean, I was thinking too, you could, if there's any school group, we could promote their discount and not the others. If there's a school function, then we'll pay for reduced on those, or if there's not, if it's not a school function, then you.
Yeah, that is how Detroit Lakes is earmarked.
So it has to be a school function.
Yeah, it has to be a school group coming in.
Perfect. I misunderstood you, because you said one, someone coming in with grandma and grandpa.
Right, if they came in on the weekend with grandma and grandpa, then it would just be the regular admission charge, which those are varying. But you track them separately. But we do track them separately. The school groups are tracked separately, correct?
So then I'll, how's this, I'll make a motion to cover, to reduce the cost by $2 a kid for all of the school groups that come that are not from Detroit Lakes.
Outside.
Outside Detroit Lakes area, with a, with a maximum of $4,886, because that would be 2,243 times two. Does that make sense?
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
And there's a second. So the motion reads that the county will supplement any school function that comes to the museum, $2 off children, up to, up to 4,886. Is that correct? Does that read appropriately for you?
Sure. Are you intending that I bill you later? Do you want us to track and bill you later?
That would be the, that would be the direction of the motion, kind of, because it's kind of stating those students, those students that come, reduction.
Yeah, I'll add that to motion, if that's good with Richard.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
And just so you know, if anybody asks, teachers and paras and all that, we, they just are in free with those school groups, we don't charge them.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
And parents, did you say?
If they're, if they're paras.
Parents, yeah, it depends. Sometimes those are triple.
Yes.
Thank you.
Since her last name is Nelson.
Thank Becky.
All right. Okay, any other reports? We're still under reports.
I might as well keep going. John and I had the Recreation Advisory Committee, we met at, actually at Dutton Locks, at the shelter. It was, I hadn't been out to Dutton Locks for a little while, so it was really cool to see the whole place, anyway, I was impressed. I missed the beginning of the meeting, so John will have to talk about the VFW shelter, about what they're going to do with that, so if you want.
Well, basically, we're still waiting to see, get their final report back from the archaeological study, to see if we want to go to the Phase Two and further, or just repurpose the location of the building, too, because that could cost you the next phase 30, 40,000, and then they might have to go to another phase. And you, and result is, you might not be able to build that.
And for, for those here that aren't familiar with Dutton Locks, what we're doing is we're, we got a grant from the state to replace the shelter out there, and we're going to enhance it and improve it and put a new one up there, a little bit different angle, and we had to do an archaeological study on the ground, and they found some artifacts that they're still studying to see if we have, we can do it. So worst case scenario, we're going to build on the same spot, but we have to ask for a grant extension now because of that, that archaeological find, so. We're, we're hoping to enhance that facility, and, and it's a beautiful site out there. I'm sure most of you have been out there and bike it and walk it and ski it. We are looking also in NRM committee, we looked at the time before, fixing a couple of those smaller shelters, because it's a very well-used site. Anything else?
And then also, too, we have a lot of District Two people here, so we need a representative from District Two on the, on the, on the committee.
On the RAC committee.
On the RAC committee. So if any of you are interested, just talk to me, we'll, I'll get you on there right away.
The RAC is a Recreation Advisory Committee.
Countywide, countywide committee.
Yeah.
Just to add to that, too, there's a little update on possibly doing something out in Chilton Park, Martha Snellman there, and then they had a little update on trail systems by Howard Glender, their RAC member.
Yep, Howard's was very knowledgeable. He, he's going to be a huge asset to the committee.
ATV, Snowville.
Snowville Horse Trails, yeah.
Okay. Anything?
I can go. We had, I had my Human Services Committee, most of what was discussed at that committee is on the agenda. Also had the Becker County Opioid Settlement Group. We had somebody from, two ladies from Wright County that came and presented on their experience with the RFP process and their grant applications and how they've spent their opioid settlement money. So that was very helpful to hear how other agencies are doing it. Grant applications are currently being accepted for Becker County through 10/123 at 12:01 midnight, precisely. Then we will.
12:01 is not midnight.
12:01 midnight.
After midnight.
After midnight. So then we will review and, and score those applications. Also, just wanted to make a note that the Early Care and Development Foundation of Becker County is currently accepting childcare grants through West Central Initiative. The grant applications range from 500 to 2,500, and that's for new and existing childcare providers. Then I also had the Senior Counsel. They, we had some representatives from Ahuvi that came and talked to us or them about energy assistance. Really important to get your energy assistance applications in. They opened September 1st. Then there's also an Elder Coffee Chat at Ahuvi Community Garden on September 28th, from 10 to 11, and we also discussed the United Way Community Celebration, which is this Thursday, from 4:00 to 30:00 to 6:00 at the Detroit Lakes Pavilion. That is really just every, anybody that has, is getting funding from United Way comes and talks about their projects. So they have lots of activities and giving away 12 free bikes. That's all I got.
We had a couple, one is Environmental Committee. We met with Clay County on a joint meeting on how we can cut our hauling costs, because our hauling contract with our president hauler is up, I believe, in December. So we're looking at some different alternatives. One would be to not just haul garbage one way and no backhaul, but be able to haul garbage both ways, but that would actually save us about 4,000 a week in hauling costs, if we can have backhauls. Problem is, we, we need to purchase some equipment, whether it's new, used, some walking forward trailers, and newer used tractor, semi-tractor, so we're working on that. We're also looking in if, if a private hauler can hook onto a county trailer and basically was MCIT, because Clay County had some, something in their new policy that they couldn't do that, but they would be looking at seeing if they can. So more to come in the future on that. Send us down to AMC Legislative Conference for afternoon, sat in on the Transportation Committee, and most of it was just informational that day. I think the big thing is what's probably not going to affect us too much is go green when you're redesigning, reconstructing highway intersection or highways themselves, anything that's over a $5 million estimate, you have to do emission testing and ways to reduce emission and try to get more traffic coming through that one, or that road, but still you're supposed to reduce velocity, number of people travel.
Is that during construction or the end product?
During, the end product. You, you have to meet this, and sitting next to Commissioner Campbell from Clay County says, that's really going to affect us, because they're in the city of Morehead, and you don't do an intersection and reconstruct for $5 million, so it's.
No.
It's, it's more to come on it, but it's.
It's a bit silly, if we're going to electric vehicles, you certainly would, those, those vehicles themselves then will, will eliminate the emissions, so.
Well, one of the ways to eliminate a lot of this in travel is to reduce parking for people, so they're, they're using transit buses, they're using other alternatives. And you look at our, a lot of our zoning regulations, you got to have, you're building something, you got to have so many parking spots. Well, that kind of scoundrel dick it, but more to come in the future on that, but it could impact the county's government. And little update on the broadband, there's still a lot of money that was becoming for pro-broadband, and a lot of the maps are out there, we found out, probably aren't the most correct, because there's a lot of shows they're served, but they're actually underserved, so everybody's supposed to be able to get the 25 up and 3 down minimum, which is right now, today's technology is a little low, but that's where they said it years ago. That's all I had.
I was at the MRC meeting, and, and one of the biggest discussions with the two senators, where Senator Rob Kupac and Senator Jordan Rasmussen, was the School Resource Officer, and, and both of those individuals were opposed to not, to the current language, they both wanted special session to, to try to correct that. It's, it's actually just one word in there that, that got changed, and unfortunately, I don't think there's going to be a special session to get that back, but there, there are solutions to it. Now the schools just have to, just hire a, a officer from the department, whether it be police or, and pay it that way, you know, it's really, it's really dumb, but both of those senators were very supportive of getting that change. It was interesting, because Senator Rob Kupac is DFL and Senator Jordan Rasmussen is Republican, and I tell you what, those two gentlemen worked together, and it was so good to see politicians from opposite sides working together, and that Jordan Rasmussen, he's a Republican from down in Fergus Falls, was a young guy, but just so, I mean, he's so good. I mean, I certainly wish that we could have people like that in our higher leadership roles. I mean, he was, what really impressed me, when Rob was speaking, he just gave him his full attention, and what, you know, it was, it was good to see people on different sides communicating like that, so. They had a lot of good things to say, and we talked quite a bit about cannabis, how we can move forward with that. IT security at the state was another item. Permitting reform was one that both, both were trying, especially Jordan was trying to get, when businesses come to Minnesota, it takes them forever to get permitting, they can't get it, they hop over to South Dakota, North Dakota, and it happens just like that. Our state permitting process is very slow and cumbersome, and it's act like they're doing you a favor by giving you any time of day, so that's my, a little added commentary there, but. They also talked about some, some other, you know, things like thinking outside the box for transit, you know, they were using some school bus during the day, they were using school bus in, in like in the city, maybe Old Land or the city, or the schools, but. And then the other topic that the MRC was really concerned about is the Drainage Registry and the public posting, and there's groups out there that want that to be posted, and, and it's getting very small requirements, and, and we are obviously opposed to that, so. We had, the next day, we talked about dispatch workforce shortage, and I think we are full-staffed Sheriff Glender, but, you know, statewide, there's a big shortage, and they had a, there was a, a panel up there saying what they would do, they were doing videos and, and billboards, that. We also discussed AMC tax forfeit update. We said the state should have a fund where the tax forfeit property, there's a, a special fund that when we, when we lose money, I mean, we're talking about, we talked about the case that the county gained money and had a, you know, following state law, and they had to reverse that, that state law's unconstitutional, now, well, we need to find a, a super fund then, that when we are the other end of it, that we can draw from, like, like John, remember the, the turkey plant in Frazee? I mean, that one tax forfeit, the, there was an old elevator in Lake Park, when tax forfeit, it burned down, it cost the county, what was that, the elevator was 50,000, lucky we, in Frazee, we got a deed grant and, and for a couple hundred, but that costs us a lot of money, so it's not, I mean, we do gain some money sometimes, and, and I, I don't think that's right on, on the situation it was, but I think that we need to have that special fund for when we do cost those big ones. Lot, lot more discussion about those type of things, I'll pass. Yeah, they went on some really good slides, I snapped some pictures of two, but I won't get into, they talked specifically about the northern counties and, and how much tax forfeit land there is and how that, but the clawback of that is up to 15 years on that tax forfeit sale, so. I think that was about it for those meetings. Any other updates?
All I had was finance, and that's on here today, so.
And we, we did well, didn't we?
We did very well.
We got a little rocky start, but we went, we went better than there, didn't we?
Yeah.
So I was going to get a replacement. When I was there for you, we did really well.
Yeah, so I, you can't imagine, but we had a little bit of a rough start.
Sometimes that happens.
And we get, we go right back into, a rough start for Richard is very rough, but he's, his bark is worse, worse than his bike, unless you get too close to him.
Yeah.
You are.
Okay.
Yeah.
You want me to do it?
Yeah, you can.
So we, Erica and I had a Human Services Committee meeting. Most of the stuff is on the agenda, but there was one thing, now you're going to have to help me out here, because I'm a Greenhorn, so. Child safety and permanency and self-support index report.
So that's really, yep, that's the, I think it's the financial support, and the Children and Family Services met certain benchmarks that the state provides.
Yep, and they, they met them, so congratulations to the Human Services for doing a great job, so.
Thank you. Congratulations, Denise, we hear a lot of the success over at Human Services. All right, 9:30. We're a little behind, but we have appointments. The Corman Watershed, I know those appointments aren't due, just noticed that they're out there. Airport, John, are you, are they up now, or do you want to wait?
No, they're up by the end of September.
Okay.
So I'd make a motion to reappoint Mark Green, Dave Sherbuck, and then myself, I'm on their committee of.
Yeah, I think you're.
It's a formality.
Okay. They want on.
So I'd make that motion.
Motion by John, is there a second?
I'll say, go ahead.
Richard, any questions? Did we receive any other people express interest?
To the airport?
Yeah.
No, sir.
Okay, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Corman Lakes Watershed, it's a notice, that's at the end of the year, by the end of the year, correct?
Yep, and we'll be posting something for the statute.
Yep, and we'll be posting something for the statute.
And that has to be posted for thirty days. Please state your name, introduce and explain why we're here today to the audience.
Yeah, I'm Matt Erickson, the Veteran Service Officer for Becker County, and I'm here to introduce my temporary Assistant Veteran Service Officer that we're going to train up and he'll be backfilling me when I'm getting deployed in the future. It's Donovan Strandberg, he's a twenty-three-year veteran of the Army, Army National Guard. And I don't know, do you want to hear, tell us a little about yourself?
Go ahead.
Like you said, my name's Donovan Strandberg, current resident in Ottawa, been living in the Lakes country for almost twenty years here. Like you said, twenty-three years in the National Guard, work full-time at the Armory across the street and just glad to be able to help to continue the service for the veterans.
Good, thank you. Do the oath of office, do we do that?
Yep. You want to do it?
Go ahead, go ahead, Matt.
Okay. Stand up. Hi Donovan Strandberg, do you solemnly swear?
I, Donovan Strandberg, do you solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully and impartially execute and discharge the duties of the Assistant County Veteran Service Officer.
And that I will faithfully and impartially execute the discharges of the duties of the Assistant County Veteran Service Office.
In the County of Becker, State of Minnesota?
In the County of Becker, State of Minnesota.
According to the law and the best of my judgment and ability.
According to the law and the best of my judgment and ability.
So, solemnly go.
So, solemnly go.
All right, thank you. We'll get up and we'll stretch our legs and congratulate you.
Dave, congratulations.
Yeah, please do.
Thank you.
Thanks again Donovan, thank you Matt.
And Matt is going on to serve us, put on active duty again, so, and that's why we needed temporary. Matt is our Veteran Service Officer currently and he's been doing a great job and we really appreciate him. Wish him the best as he goes on this next adventure, so thanks Matt. All right. Pat, what do you see in order that we should go into, you think?
I'll zip through this probably quickly if you like, Commissioner. So just one thing on a report that's not listed, and I know Kyle will probably speak to it later on, is we had our kickoff meeting for the community-based comprehensive plan, so we had a meeting with Bolton, I'm sure Ochsman was able to attend, and we had Jim Olson, there's Highway Department head, and then Kyle who's the project champion, then myself. What our recommendation is, is we continue those meetings every two weeks and we would like to have both the commissioners that sit on the planning commission sit on that. It sounds like they are open to that, but I'd want to make sure the board is supportive of that as well.
Was it two weeks or one month?
Excuse me, you might be correcting me correctly. It's, we have designated times, but it would, it would require both the commissioners to be involved. Some of it would be teams, other would be in person, but since ordinances are a big component of this, we think having them early on would be, would be important. So there's not any objections, Commissioner Nelson, we'd like to continue with that approach.
Noah, as a matter of fact, I, when they're announced, maybe we have to assign commissioners, but I think we might post it if, depending upon the topics and if we're going through ordinances and what, I think we might be posting those because all commissioners maybe want to be involved and have input on some of those.
Absolutely.
At least here, the public.
Right. I believe their timeline, I thought I'd start diving into those in October.
Yes, very, very, very aggressive timeline, but I think a timeline that we can meet.
I think it's important to hold them to those ordinances too, because that is, in my opinion, the most important part of the.
I brought that up to him again.
And those, those ordinances, I mean, there's four or five of them that are critical and I think for those particular interest is the VRBOs and their, we're looking at putting some restrictions on the VRBOs, the rented out units. We don't have objection to renting your home out for, but we don't think that you should be investing in commercial property as lake homes and renting them out as a, as your profession. If people want to, my opinion, this, I'm speaking my, my opinion is if you have a home or cabin you want to rent out a week or two in the summer or even more than that, but I don't like the idea of investors coming in, buying lake homes and investing them out, especially if it's a weekend here, you know, at a time. We're looking at setting some maybe, and this is for you to put input now on these, these meetings, do you wish them to be minimum week stays or minimum, you know, there's some of those type of things that are very important. If someone buys your next door property and they start renting it out on a, on a daily basis, and I think the city of Detroit Lakes has this covered already under their ordinance, but the county does not, so that's one of the things we're looking at. Okay, Pat?
Yes, continuing on, association and townships remind the board and the public that that will be on October nineteenth at six-thirty. We always have it in the third floor jury room, so we will post that repeatedly, it'll be on our website and certainly commissioners have attended in the past and they do request specific department heads to attend to give an update and things like that, but certainly commissioners have always been invited. Joint Governance Meeting, we'll be hosting that, that'll be October third at seven AM. And I know many of you commissioners have participated in a past joint governance meeting, so I'm looking for a little direction. As you know, many of them have much bigger conference rooms than our room here, and so the question I would have is, we could probably orientate tables to try to create that same atmosphere. Last year, we just had everyone sitting in chairs like these individuals are doing now and people would come up, would give a presentation, but I think a more round robin where we're all facing each other would be appropriate. And if this isn't big enough, we could also entertain the idea of the third floor jury room, and I was just curious if the board, any thoughts on that?
I think we should have it at Public Works.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Public Works is another idea, I never thought about that, it's a brand new building.
Brand new, brand new facility, a beautiful meeting room and.
That's cool.
Yeah, good idea.
So I'll put that out there and put it on the agenda.
What did you say?
Pat just go let Jim and Jonah know, because they start at seven, so.
The only challenge will be is obviously you'll need to get back here for the board meeting, it's on the same day, but that's always, never been a problem in past meetings. Okay, well, thank you for your input on that.
The other option I thought of, if that's not possible, is the planning and zoning conference room, they already have the tables set up.
True.
I don't know if that's big enough, but.
Exactly, Jim first.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll start with that. I'll communicate to all of you when I find more about that. Thank you. So you were handed out an updated budget sheet and there's a timeline, obviously on page fourteen, we're on September nineteenth of our timeline, that is to set the preliminary maximum levy. This document was reviewed with the Finance Committee on Monday and what we have proposed is a preliminary maximum levy of five point nine six percent. That would include a few budget scenarios and I'll just read those to you as some addition of staff at the Sheriff's Office of a deputy position and lieutenant position, those are on the agenda today, and then an Assistant County Attorney position as well, all starting January one, and then an attorney auditor position as well. What it doesn't include is some recent requests that were made by the food pantry of the museum, those are nominal requests, we don't have an issue that those can be put into the budget, we just didn't have them incorporated because of the, of when we've been communicated with. So we do need to set a preliminary levy before September thirtieth, so if there's an interest to not approve this, we would want to set up a temporary, I'm sorry, a special board meeting to get some additional direction and set that levy. But what we'd propose is a five point nine six percent, five point nine six percent maximum levy. I want the board to know that this not include any of the additional funds that we received legislatively, with the exception of the county program we've incorporated into the budget, but all these other funds, including special general funds, are not part of this budget.
It also does not include a nurse position that we are discussing later on, this does not.
There could be future positions, yes.
It includes the revenue that that will generate, but it does not include the nurse portion. We feel that there is, that we've identified that we can do it without, but.
Yes.
There's, there's also, it states in there about that deputy, that deputy that we'll be discussing later is in the budget already. I mean, it's not a new position, but it's confusing because we're going to, the talk before was we were going to look at the lieutenant position and use the deputies funding it, but, I mean, so there's some confusion, but the deputy position is in the current budget, but this adds the lieutenant position in. So you almost, we almost should discuss if we're, if we're looking at the lieutenant position, well, we can approve this and then discuss that, we can always go down, but recommend it was finance was the five point nine.
But this is the max.
This is as high as we can go for this year.
We can get it down to three.
Yeah.
And I'll page.
Absolutely.
And if I could, Commissioner Nelson, on page fifteen is the resolution, zero-nine-two-three-two-E, it outlines exactly what has been expressed in that other document, talks about the amount of that levy increase. And also by approving that resolution, you are approving when the truth and taxation hearing will be, and that's scheduled for December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three at six oh one PM in the boardroom.
I think it's fair to say that the reason why this, in my opinion, why this is so high is because of last year's negotiation with employees, that we are paying, we are paying for it, we gave them more than what we had budgeted for last year, so we are, we are having to pay for that and plus what we anticipate the current year. So that's why we are at where we're at. We, we paid more than, we bargained, we negotiated at a higher than what we had budgeted for, so it was about, what was that, about three, not quite three percent increase of just from last year's that we had to put into this year's, so that's why we're, that's where we're, in my opinion, high. And we are eighty-five percent, is that a fair number, eighty-five percent salary in our budget?
Approximately seventy, eighty percent, yep.
So with that being said, we, Richard and I at Finance recommended to go with the five point nine six to set at our maximum preliminary levy. So entertain a motion to pass resolution, do you have it handy on your?
Oh-nine-two-three-two-E.
Is it oh-nine? I'd make that motion.
Motion by John, second by Richard, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. And now for economic development.
Yeah, and that's resolution zero-nine-two-three-two-F, and so this one, we're continuing the ongoing budget review with the EDA board, but this levy particularly is, after we met with the County Auditor Treasurer and the Economic Development Specialist, we've got an increased cost contractually with housing, affordable housing management. Now we are going out for an RFP, there will be perhaps bringing those costs down, but we had to identify, at least acknowledge of what we're paying now for housing management. So, so in the resolution zero-nine-two-three-two-F, you have a levy of the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the twenty-twenty-four budget, and that would be the preliminary maximum levy. We expect through ongoing negotiations with a future contract and with budget discussion, we'll be able to bring that down, but we wanted to be very accurate with what we expect cost could be.
And in the past in EDA, we've been deficit spending.
Yes, we have.
And this brings us a little bit more current and bring some of those fund balances down. So wishes of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution oh-nine-two-three-two-F.
Okay, motion by Erica.
I'll second.
Second by Richard, any other discussion? The only thing I would like to say is Mary brought up a good point yesterday, well, so our next, our tax capacity is going, is still trending down, so with a new construction is about one percent maybe, and the, but I noted, our valuations have been going through the roof, I'm sure that I don't have to tell the people in this room that your valuations are going up on your property, but our tax rate then goes down. So I mean, we're not, we don't tax the old mill way, we tax the dollar mound and it's appropriated across by the state's rules. So did, do we need to vote on that yet? Or did I take?
No, we do need to vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Point.
Oh-one-eight-five.
Yeah.
Yep.
What was, what was the question?
The percentage.
Percentage of increase?
Yeah.
It says is a point oh-one-eight percent of taxable market value.
But it went up from, it went to one sixty from one twenty.
Yeah, one sixty from one twenty-four, so we can get you that levy if you can't compute that for yourself, but Noah, Commissioner, and it is in your, the resolution, Commissioner Johnson was mentioning the taxable market value levy, which is not the.
In the past though, we were, we were deficit spending our budget, so I mean, we were spending down some of our reserves in the past. Okay, next Pat?
Yes, and just on the class and comp study, that's an ongoing.
Yeah, we had, that was part of our earlier discussion and.
Right, so we'll just continue with that and we'll come back to you with additional recommendations.
Auditor Treasurer. We are slowly catching up a little bit.
Let me get that. The first item through finance, I want to request to reallocate funds for the final museum payment.
And through the, through finance, we were spending most of our, we're spending funds down on our recorders' funds and the recorders' funds are, they're only, they're fees that are paid for in the recording office, and they can only be spent for certain things. And we designated some of the payments from there going to pay for our portion of the museum. The museum houses our funds and our archives are some, most of our zoning, are most of our records, so, but those funds are getting depleted. We are using those funds still to budget some items in the county, so we need to, this is our last payment and we will not be able to take all those funds from there, so we want to take that from our special general reserve fund, which is the old ARPA funding to finish that payment on the museum. So we need to allocate funds.
Yep, request a motion to allocate that a hundred thousand dollars be moved from recorder's equipment to special general to pay for the museum.
Okay, was there two funds that you want to take out of?
Well, we're taking.
Is that the first motion?
Special general recorder equipment and enhancement. The original plan in twenty-twenty-one was to take two-thirds of it out of recorders. Well, we've depleted that, so that's not even possible now. We do have the special general balance, so we just want to do this final payment of a hundred and fifty thousand from special general, fifty-one-five from recorder equipment and sixty-seven thousand from enhancement. And I'm requesting a motion to make that change.
So you want, so you want to change, you want to pull sixty-seven thousand from enhancement, fifty-one-five from?
Record, equipment.
Equipment.
Yep.
To generals, to make, transfer that to special general?
No, the hundred and fifty comes out of special general.
Yes.
The total payment is three hundred and sixty-six thousand.
What's the hundred thousand dollar transfer?
We had allocated that to come out of recorder's funds, she doesn't have those funds, so the fifty thousand out of special general would be increased to a hundred and fifty.
Okay, so you're, that's just a, that's just a bookkeeping thing, so we need to.
Right, I'm just requesting a motion, so when they audit us.
Do you want it split up into the two funds or is just?
No, it's going to be three funds.
I know, but you want to, do you want the wordage to be under two fund, to name both of the recorder's funds when we say we're transferring to the, you're transferring a debt reduction, right?
Right, we're taking a hundred thousand that was being debited to the recorder and taking it out of special general.
Correct.
That can be the motion right there, Commissioner.
Okay, and so we will just eliminate the confusion part of it.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion to pay the museum, it's, and we need one fifty out of special reserve, fifty-one-five out of enhancement and sixty-seven thousand out of equipment, or is it vice versa?
Vice versa.
Vice versa.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? That will clarify for the audit, specifically where the funds are coming from, we don't need to reallocate designated. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Yep, the next item I have is tobacco license renewals, I have four applications. Do you want me to go through them or just?
I think we can do them all at once.
You can do.
I'd make a motion to approve a Caliber's Corner, Richard, Ridgewood Off Sale, Corman Bottle Shop and Ice Cracking Lodge for tobacco renewal license.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the tobacco renewal license, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. One of the questions AMC rose is how we're going to license the cannabis places, so Brian will have to get us on top of how we license cannabis shops in the future, if we're going to just assign them with tobacco license and inspections like that, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Mary, you're going to be in charge of the cannabis license. Okay, nine fifty. Judy?
Denise.
Denise. Oh, is Denise first?
Denise.
Oh, sorry, Denise and Judy, you're both pretty.
Good morning. Excuse me.
And before us today is Denise Warren.
Good morning.
And before us today is Denise Warren, the supervisor of, of human services, and she's doing an amazing job. So she has a request today and, and explain her proposal.
We respectfully request approval on resolution 09232C for a full-time registered nurse in public health.
And can you explain where the funding will come from?
The funding will come from revenue derived from the Ucare SNBC.
Okay. And originally the number, we, we're receiving a lot more clients than what we originally anticipated.
Yeah, it's more than double what we originally anticipated back in.
So if we hire, Denise provided finance, I'm sure, committee information showing that the revenues from this will be about 400,000. We could contract out that we would not be as much, we would not get as much revenue, significantly less. So this is a kind of a revenue generator for the county through, from the state. So the revenue on this was, I think, 400,000 and the cost will be about 85,000. The 400,000 revenue is in our budget and the cost of 85 is not in our budget that we just approved. But we, we've anticipated we can work through that. Okay, so wishes of the board?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 09232C.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. A little, we're a little back and forth, but we're all approving. So thank you.
Thanks, please.
And thank you for your work on the budget. I know Denise's department is coming in at a 0% increase, which helps us offset some of our, she's doing some budget cutting and finding ways to trim that. So, hey, now Judy. Sorry, Judy.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Judy.
I have two things in front of you guys today. One is to approve some security software for $34,400, $34,462.22 for two years of security software. It will come out of the special general fund.
So before us, we have Judy Dodd, who is our IT director. She is doing an amazing job keeping us safe. If, I'm sure all of you know the cyber attacks for, for government agencies especially, but for everyone is, is growing and we have to be diligent. I encourage you on your home computers too, to make sure you, you do strong passwords and, and we are being attacked by not just local criminals. It's, it's worldwide attacks on us, just like the scam call. So Judy, Judy has emplaced us on many phishing, she has phishing traps for all of us employees at the county too, that we, she tries to catch us on so not to click on the wrong stuff. So these are things that we've discussed in a couple of times before. I think it's critical that we do this to protect the county's infrastructure on the IT, which is in today's world, it's unfortunate. We can't just go back to paper trail, but that's, Mary would be very happy if we could do that, but we can't. So entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Erica.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
The next thing I have, again, on that same vein, is some deployment software for one year for 500, $5,265 again, coming out of the special general fund.
Okay.
Who'd approve?
Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Again, this has been discussed at this board a couple of times and realize this need for this. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
Good morning.
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 Board time.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have three items and I do have some supporting documents I'd like to bring forward.
Please.
Yes.
So, so at finance and at sheriff's committee, we've, we've seen these documents prior, but when we're talking about the position, we want to make sure that the full board has this in front of you to see if.
Here's my.
I think there's next row.
I'll share with you.
Commissioner, we're bringing that over to them.
Okay. Go ahead, Todd.
I was just waiting for Barry's introduction.
Oh, I think everyone knows, everyone knows these two, these two characters. So, but go ahead and introduce yourself.
Sheriff Todd Glander, and I brought Chief Deputy Shane Richard up with me today because of the supporting documents he put together, and I'd rather have him explain. If you have questions, I can also, but in case there's any issues. Items one and two actually pretty much go together, but resolution 923B or 2B, excuse me, is a request for a deputy sheriff. This position is already in the budget. If you look at your supporting documents, it shows where Becker County sits as far as state average and also in the average with counties that have the population served between 10,000 and 24,999. We serve a population, the sheriff's office serves a population of 22,816. As you can see, other counties, for example, Clay County, they are much lower. They're roughly a little over 10,000. So we are a office that serves a large population. The counties that, this actually only goes up to 2019, but it does show a good comparison of where we're at. We are number three in counties that have reservations. Our county, again, an average of three years, 2017, 2018, 2019. Our calls for service per deputy was 834.55. In comparison, Clay County, and I don't want to pick on Clay County, I'm just showing it as a comparison. At that time, they, they served a little over 11,000 and their calls for service on average was 419.79. Just roughly half of what we, what we do for calls for service. We have 24 deputies currently. From 99 to 2019, we had 21. Our population has increased from 2020 to 20, or excuse me, from 2000 to 2020, we've increased over 5,000. The county attorney's office has increased twofold, has doubled in size, and they're looking at putting on one more. And that, that pretty much correlates to the crime that our deputies have to respond to.
I think, I think too, the severity of the crimes are, are more than, than in the past. I mean, our, our society seems to be more, I think, I think your average severity of crimes that we have coming through are in, are increasing, the number of severe crimes. And, and those take a lot more time than your, just your traffic ops do. Where the confusion lies in, in our discussion today is I think our finance, our sheriff's committee was saying, well, we support the lieutenant position and then we'll consider the deputy, the deputy that was vacant. That's why it's in here now. The deputy position is, is already in the budget. It's the lieutenant position that we are, are asking to add or that we're asking to consider to add.
Yeah, that's my thoughts too, Commissioner Nelson. We're kind of favorable to move forward with a lieutenant position at this time to start sometime in 24. But I'd like to see the, just wait till we get the final budget set before we add another deputy too and move forward with that.
So, so in the budget currently, because it says on here, there is a full-time deputy and a full-time lieutenant, but that's not right?
Yes, that is correct. It, both are in the budget correctly.
Sheriff's committee, we discussed using part of the present budgeted deputy's salary going into the new year to offset some of the lieutenant.
Correct. I did find funding in other line items that can be used to offset that.
And Sheriff Glaner supported that in, in finance yesterday, that we're under, we're paying overtime and, and part-time pay. If we could, we can reduce those numbers would, would offset $40,000 of the new position. And that would be through reducing, reducing overtime for position and boat and water, which, because we have now a full-time boat and water person on staff. So that part-time boat and water was not up to what the old budget was, I think. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Because we have a full, we have a dedicated full-time officer that handles a lot of the boat and water stuff. So.
So just in looking at this documentation, we're currently ranked 81 for the, out of all of the counties for number of deputies per citizens, but this, this really doesn't include our summer population.
It does not.
Right. I mean, I think that's something we have to think about is our summer population
Can we?
Probably almost doubles.
Can, in the matter of giving this to, we can digest this. Can we move forward? I would like to move forward with the lieutenant position today and then maybe at our next meeting, let's revisit the, the, the new deputies, maybe and bring it back through sheriffs and have a little bit more dialogue and, and go from there. But I would like to move forward with the, I think the lieutenant position. I, I think we have a gentleman sitting before us here that's, that's putting in way too many hours that he's not being compensated for because he, he, I mean, most of our officers just love doing the work and, and I think he's one of them. I don't want him to continue, well, he's, he's putting in a lot of time that he, that he just feels he has to because it's part of his, to get the job done. So I think we should move forward with that. John, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm favor moving forward lieutenant position. We're starting sometime in 24.
Well, I think it's, I think you can start advertising for it now. It'll be probably the, if he can go internally, that can happen before the end of 24. And it's with our cost savings and to, and not fulfilling that current, there's money in the budget to do that. The deputy position's vacant now and the cost savings on the other two part times will fully fund that lieutenant position. And then look at the, the backfill of the.
Along with that, I'd, I'd move resolution 2A and the table.
Well, let's do one part of it.
Motion 2A then.
Motion to approve 2A.
I'll second it.
Second by Richard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. The, the deputy, the deputy sheriff, let's, let's bring that back through, through sheriffs and, and I think we'll, we'll even look at more, more records and I know you've shown, shown these before. We are, our numbers are very, we're very low on deputies per population and, and per area and per call. So something we can maybe look at a little bit closer than, than today.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can just clarify with that lieutenant position, I would want to backfill.
Yes, yes. There's, obviously there, if there's a promotion, we need to backfill that position immediately.
Okay.
And that's in, that's in the resolution.
I believe it's in the resolution. Okay. And then item number three, I would like to purchase a trailer. We would first like to sell two of our trailers. So we're consolidating. We have that snowmobile that was donated to us by team. However, we, when we put that on a trailer with an ATV or snowmobile, we don't have enough room. So we'd like to sell two trailers and then purchase a, a three-place trailer. And those quotes are in your packet.
Just to clarify, both quotes were 16-foot trailers?
Yes.
The same width? One didn't give too much information, the second one did. One is 86 by 16, 86 inches wide.
Yes. They're, they're both, I, I guess I can't say actual numbers, but I know they were both three-place trailers, three-place snowmobile trailers.
If it's three-place, they gotta have two wide and one, one across. So it would have to be.
Yeah, the one looks like if I read it right, it's 101 inches wide.
102. Yeah.
No, it was all 86.
So take the low quote confirming with the stipulation that it is the same width to handle the.
And I will.
Two-stone. Well, I'm, I'm pretty sure it is because a three-place snowmobile would have to have that width to do two side by side, but confirm that.
I will.
Otherwise. Okay.
Along with that, I make a motion to purchase a trailer from Lakes Area Trailers, quarter amount of.
6269?
6269, that's.
Okay.
Provided that.
We have a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Second by Dave. And then just confirm the, the width on that.
Oh.
Okay. It was noted too, that the local places were contacted and, and didn't have either supply or, or got back to us.
Correct.
So with that, enter, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Did you want a motion to dispose of the old trailers?
Yes. And I do have VIN numbers that, that did not get on the.
That, was that part of the resolution, disposing of?
It is.
It was.
And one thing we are going to make sure that there's, if any other department needs a trailer, we, we're going to check with environmental or if, if they needed a trailer to have them look at it and first charge them appropriately. Right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff Glaner. Thank you, Shane.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
We are going to go on a five-minute break. Almost caught up, so.
If he wants to do that.
We're actually ahead of schedule because we've done the. We're actually ahead of schedule, because we've done the close. Things before we move into.
Good day, Bob here.
And reminder to everyone, you're free to move in and out of the room as, as anytime you wish, if we're conducting business, try to do it just quietly. And we are gonna move on to human resources, procurement, policy and appeals, these are some things that we worked through at our last, after our last meeting, Commissioner Shram wants to have some input.
He always complains about can't hear.
I know, he says he can't hear, I'm speaking into my mic and everything, and he's just giving you a little grief. Commissioner Shram is in our front row, former commissioner, has valuable insight to. So, we, we, we had this in a work session last week, so today, we're just here to basically approve some, some policies that we're going, that we went through. So, Carrie, introduce yourself and go ahead.
Uh, good morning, I'm Carrie Smith, I'm the Human Resource Director and.
Oh, I don't think it's turned on.
Turn it on.
It is on.
Oh.
Am I too far? Okay, there you go, better? Yeah, I don't talk very loud, so. The, the, before, in the package, you have the county procurement procedures and policy, which we had in work session that we talked about updating the amounts that can be approved, and on that particular policy, I believe it's on page six.
Yes.
Page six.
Six, oh.
Well, it's on page, it's on page thirty-three, the what we're going to, just one thing that I thought yesterday.
So, at the top of that page, number four, five and six, the recommendation was to increase those amounts to three thousand, five thousand and five thousand one, also, I provided Peggy with, I don't know if she has it up there, but there was some suggestion on that number six, also to have a little bit different language so that at that dollar amount, it goes, it's reviewed by the department head, and ultimately, the deciding board, this board is the decider on that, so I did put a little bit different language in there than perhaps what you have in your policy, if you want me, if you'd like me to read it back to you, I certainly can.
Okay, so, the, the, the change I had, how it was worded, it sounded like it had to be approved by all the prior ones prior to coming to the board, I mean, and, and ultimately, if it's approved by the county board, it's the, it's approved.
Yeah, and that was the old language that was in there, I just hadn't modified it, so, but now I did make those recommended changes.
I, I think we just need to, I think you just need to eliminate everything after the depart, the department head on to the county administrator, just, it's going to go through those channels, but it has to be approved by the county board, that's the, that's the key difference, so I would, I would even be willing to say, purchase exceeding five thousand one shall be approved by the county board, by the Board of Commissioners.
Yep.
It goes through those other channels already, I mean, regardless.
Okay. All right. All right, so I will make those changes, and with that, I would be looking for a motion to approve this.
Motion approved.
Motion by John.
With changes.
I'll second.
Second by Dave, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
So, along with this particular policy, there was a recent federal transit audit, and what they indicated that Becker County was missing was a bid protest, some type of a policy, if there was concerns with the bids, so in your package, you also have a draft, and we did talk about this in policy, basic, or in our policy session, so really, what I did was just put this, took some language for, for some, from some other examples that I had found, and made it into a Becker County steps that one can go through if there is a bid protest. It would be for all bids, but it was prompted by a transit federal audit. So, if there's no questions on that, I would be looking for approval on that, a motion and approval.
We, so move.
Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Erica, any discussion?
Do, do we need this for all bids, or do we, because we, or is it just required for transit?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, I know it was prompted by transit, it was required in their audit.
I would say it'd probably be good to have.
I, I was gonna say, they're gonna do it for one, I would say that you should just, best practice for all.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
So, the last policy for your consideration, again, is one that we reviewed in our informal work session, and it's titled reasonable accommodations for pregnant workers' policy. This is a federal mandate that's required, so I basically took the statutory language that's required in this and wrote it for Becker County, so I'd be looking for a motion to approve that as well.
And, and Richard wanted to include those, those people that identified as pregnant No, he didn't, I'm just kidding, Richard probably wouldn't support that. So, so we, again, worked through this in our last session, so entertaining a motion to. Motion by Richard.
I'll second.
Second by Dave, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, highway.
Good morning, commissioners, two items for your consideration, first is approval of a low quote for doing a limited site investigation, some background is our old facilities, we removed the underground storage tanks, we had testing done at that time and sent into the PCA, there were some items that were above the threshold, so the PCA is now requiring us to do further investigation as part of the closing of the, the underground storage tanks, this work is reimbursable through the state Petro Fund up to ninety percent, as long as we get two quotes, we have solicited and received two quotes, and we're recommending award to Metco, the low quoter, for this work.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the quote from Metco for twelve thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars.
There's a motion, it's the second.
I'll.
Second by Richard, and then can we complete that with authors, the county engineer to enter an agreement with the needed professional service?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next item for consideration, request to consider a amendment to a contract for professional services with Moore Engineering, Moore Engineering is our consultant performing design work in the city of Lake Park on our County Seven and County Eighty, the work includes mill and overlay and substantial sidewalk reconstruction, curb work and storm sewer to meet the ADA requirements, from their initial estimate of their work, they have discovered that there is additional work that they did not estimate in their, the original plan, additional sidewalk work to meet the ADA standards, as a result, they need to spend more time designing the project, so they are requesting that the new not-to-exceed number be increased from a hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred to a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, this is paid based off of their hourly rates at the time they spend on it, if they can complete their work without going to that amount, we will not be billed to that amount, but it is the new not-to-exceed number. This does happen on occasion on projects that do grow in size, the estimate has been originally estimated at one point two million or so dollars, and it's now increased over two point five million, so there is more work than they had originally anticipated.
And Jim assured that this was well within the, within reason, so.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Richard to approve the new, the increase.
I'll second.
Second by Dave, the dollar, do you have the dollar amounts, Peggy?
Nine, nine one sixty-one six two one.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, sir.
Steve? Steve is going to be presenting. From Environmental Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And he's gonna end it promptly at ten forty-five.
Okay. Last year, when we put forth a solid waste assessment proposal to the board, the board request at that time was to look at possibly changing it, and so, we did look at changing our whole system, which we brought it through committee, several meetings, looking at different options and, and trying to get this laid out, and so today, we put together a PowerPoint talking about what a solid waste assessment is, how it, what the authority is behind it, and how you, how it comes about, because we do have some new board members that I think should be educated on this, so we'll just go through this really quick, I'm gonna go to the next slide, for County Environmental Services. A solid waste assessment, what is it? It's basically a fee that's used to pay for solid waste items such as recycling hazardous waste, waste reduction services, collection, processing, development of solid waste infrastructure, you can read through this, a disposal of solid waste, any extra costs that we may incur dealing with solid waste, and you have two different ways of recovering those costs, either you can do it through tip fees, or you can have a solid waste assessment, which we'll get into a little bit, how you can disperse those funds out. I'm gonna go to the next, okay, the purpose of this is to establish, let's see, solid waste assessment service charges may be imposed on solid waste management services within a service area, the service area is, is the county boundaries, that's been approved by resolution by the county board in the past, so that's all been taken care of in our ordinance, generators are obligated to pay the solid waste management charges that are assessed upon them, and in the past, we've used amount of volume that we anticipate or that we collect information from our licensed waste haulers to help it spread that assessment, so that's approved by the board every year by resolution, and, you know, the next slide. So, in establishing these rates, the county board, through our committee system, we look at all the relevant factors, which can be, what kind of costs we want to recover, because we have certain types of activities which we have no way of recovering costs, like hazardous waste, and the county board has determined that's a program that we want to keep in place, but there's a net cost to it, other things would be recycling, dealing with special waste, which, such as furnace bulbs, those types of items, that we want to allow people to dispose of, but we don't have any really good means of charging for that. So, they, they can take into account any and all factors that go into solid waste, which, as you're expanding your solid waste program, if we need to develop infrastructure, that can be billed back to this as well, so you take into account, we just expanded our recycling facility, the payment on that could be included in your solid waste assessment, because all the people in the county benefit from it, and you can read on these other things like, any, any other solid waste management costs, next, next slide, please. So, there's a, we, we've already completed item A here, we've established that we need a solid waste management charger and assessment, and then that, that was, when we completed our solid waste ordinance, that's when that was established, so every year, then, I brought it back to the board, and by resolution, we've changed both our tipping fees and our solid waste assessment. So, and then also to collect it, that solid waste assessment, you could have two choices, one is either you can mandate your solid waste haulers to collect it, and they turn in that amount to the county, or you can spread it on a per parcel fee, which is what we've historically done, most counties do that. Next page. So, when we determine the amount of the solid waste charge that's gonna be assessed, our department would do that, normally, we'd turn it, we, the county board has to approve it by October fifteenth, which is important to have this meeting now, because of the next board meeting, we'd have to approve a rate, and then that's turned over to the auditor's office, which then they include it on the property assessment every year as a solid waste assessment on, on the property tax, the auditor is also in charge of doing the collection, if somebody does not pay it, then we'd work through the county attorney to determine a way to collect that. Go ahead. So, we already discussed this.
If it's on their taxes, isn't that delinquent?
It, it can be, the problem is, is that a solid waste charge can be assessed against all properties in the county, which would include tax-exempt properties, so you can charge it against for-profits, nonprofits, city, county governments, anybody that generates waste, and it's.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm sure Brian would love to go after a church that's, that's not paying their assessment, Brian's.
That's, that's one of the things that we talk about later, so.
Brian, you can take that if you need to.
Just continuing on. What is a solid waste assessment used for here in Becker County historically? We've used it to help pay for some of our solid waste management costs, a lot of our cost is in labor, and we also send waste to different places, so Becker County owns approximately twenty-two percent of the prairie expenses of solid waste authority, the incinerator imperium, their new tip fees, I believe it's going up from this, we had a hundred and twenty-four dollars a tip fee, or that's what our cost is that they bill back to Becker County, versus if you landfill it at fifty-six dollars a ton, so you can see landfilling is much cheaper. So you can see landfilling is much cheaper, but you can use a solid waste assessment to help buy that down so you don't have to have a real high tip fee at the transfer station. And there's some reasons why you'd do that. For Becker County, there's long, less long-term liability, so if we landfill items, if there's a, that landfill has a problem in the future, they can come back to the county and recover those costs that they incur to, to take care of that problem.
So we, we have a, an unknown liability at the landfill currently. If there is a major catastrophe up there, we would be liable for whatever percentage that we've deemed, whatever they deemed as reasonable percentage of, which is pretty small, but it still could, on a big bill, it's.
It could be, yes, absolutely.
I think in the, in the years past, we had a big reserve in, in our environmental reserve because of that. And now we're, we're spending that down because it's getting less likely hopefully all the time.
There's that, and then also tip fees have been going up substantially in the last few years. You know, when I started doing this, we were at about $40 a ton, now they're talking $80 to $100 a ton at a lot of these places, plus transportation. The other reasons we got into Purim was we'd like to see more recovery recyclables and we can also sell steam to a local manufacturer, which is.
And just recently Fargo though has limited garbage being able to haul there. I mean, we don't have an unlimited, we can't just unlimited haul to Fargo anymore.
That's true.
So this, the incinerator was a place where we can manage our garbage and we have long-term, we, we thought at the time long-term, but now maybe with the state imposing new regulations, we're hoping that that doesn't turn into something, but.
Correct. So we're supporting local industry and then for Becker County, we bought into Purim because it helps secure long-term disposal, like Commissioner was saying. Also other costs that we can, we try to recover, can, that we can recover our management of other solid waste activities on our solid waste management. Go to the next slide.
It's, it's good to know though that we, we sell our steam to local businesses in Purim. The two businesses are, is it Tuffy's?
Tuffy's and Baumgart's Cheese.
And Baumgart's Cheese, so you can go to Central Market and buy Baumgart's Cheese, you're, you're supporting your industry that's buying your garbage and buying the steam for it. A local plug for local business.
Other programs that we use to, to help pay for with the solid waste assessment, we have a very robust recycling program. We have close to 40 public drop sites scattered around the county that we service. They also service 200-plus businesses with, with compact trucks. We perform audit services if local organizations request that. We also do event recycling, for example, at the fair, work with other businesses, or if they want to recycle at special events. Plus we recycle many, like I said earlier, many special wastes, such as furnace bulbs, batteries, oil, number of different things, that the cost of dealing with that, we can use, we can use a solid waste assessment to help recover those costs. Next page, next slide, please. The solid waste assessment also can help cover freight costs and processing costs when we send commodities to end markets to get, to dispose of it, it's cheaper to do that than it may be to send it to a landfill. A good example is glass, there's not a strong market for glass, but we're able to get rid of it at minimal cost, a minimal tip fee to us, but then you have the cost of getting the glass down to the Twin Cities, so. But that's just an example, there's, there's a number of other things that we subsidize the disposal cost with the solid waste assessment. We also started doing a reuse program. There's probably a net cost to that, we were able to get some grants to help cover those costs, but long-term, if the county decides to continue to do that, to try to figure out an alternative to landfilling, their solid waste assessment can be used to help support that type of a program. We do have a demolition landfill and we have started recycling programs with that. We recycle shingles, clean wood waste, concrete. We're looking for other ways to defer commodities for, to keep them out of the demolition landfill. That's, that's another instance where you use a solid waste assessment. Future projects that we're talking about, getting into composting or organics. So our separated organics, those would, those are the other things that we'd use. Just moving on. Education, of course, education is one of those things that the county is obligated to do. We do a lot of education on public, on, on solid waste related matters. We do presentations, we go into the schools, churches, different places like that, where we talk to them about solid waste related items. We also promote waste reduction and proper management of solid waste through our collection system. We work with other agencies, particularly the state, to have a public outreach that's similar to other areas, so people get a uniform message around the state on how to recycle and how to handle waste. We also develop and distribute public education materials through these different means. One other thing that we've been talking about getting into is getting more staff education so that we can get people trained on to do inspection of old dwellings so that they can properly dispose of them without, without cost to them. Examples of this would be old barns and outbuildings on farms in rural areas where if legally, if they're going to dispose of them now, they'd have to get an inspection done from an outside source, which is very expensive. And as a result, people have a less of a tendency to want to go down that path. So we want to encourage people to dispose of those kind of type items in a manner that we think is the right way to do it. Hazardous waste, we have a very robust household hazardous waste program, we also deal with commercial hazardous waste. That's a program we started about 10 years ago, approximately. And it's, and it's getting a lot of support from both local businesses, but other branches of government as well. So we deal with hazardous waste, pharmaceuticals, agricultural waste, pesticides, herbicides, those types of items. And we can do it, handle it at a much lesser cost than you would if you, if they had to go to an outside source to get rid of them. So the solid waste assessment helps keep the hazardous waste program free to residents and is, it's a low-cost solution for non-residential hazardous waste as well. Talking about the future, there's just a list of items that we've talked about in committee. We're talking about building a storage building for recyclable commodities. Markets can go up and down, sometimes you can't get rid of things, you have to be able to hold them till you can. That's why we're looking at a storage building, also adding more processing facility capacity, expansion of our transfer station, as the costs of waste go up, you have to figure out some alternative way of dealing with it and that, that would be capacity we'd have to add to our current system out there. Also expansion of our reuse, that program is growing dramatically, that's an item that's supported by the state of Minnesota. There probably will be some grant programs that will help us expand that hopefully going into the future, but that's just kind of the way things are going. Also, you can use solid waste assessment for replacing machinery. Many of these items are very expensive, you talk about payloaders, trucks, trailers, those type of items. You can, through proper planning, you can add that to a solid waste assessment if that's a direction the board wants to go to pay for those items. So how will a solid waste assessment be calculated? I'm going to go to the next. So in the past, we had a lump sum, we just assigned for residential seasonal properties, they had a lump sum. In your packet, there's an example of the last year's assessment and how it's done. So we're going to change that this year to where we're going to assign points based on how many, how much waste people generate. We're going to make some assumptions in this. That one cubic yard of loose waste weighs 100 pounds and 400 pounds of waste will equal one point. And that a single family residence produces about a ton of garbage a year, that's a pretty well-known figure that's used by the state. As part of our solid waste ordinance, we require licensed haulers to report the volume of loose garbage that they collect from every business that they service in a year. What we require them to do is give us a dumpster size and a frequency and we can figure out how many cubic yards of capacity that business would use. And we use that then as a basis to determine how many cubic yards of garbage that they would likely generate. So based on that, you can figure out how many points a business would have. So if they generate 10 points, 15 points, we can, we can go through that mechanism. What's different about this, this year is that we, by doing that and taking those figures, I can, if I have a business or an entity that we don't know what their volume is, we can compare it to like type businesses where we do have information on and we can anticipate what that number would be. So based on that, we can anticipate the number of points both for residential, seasonal, resorts, any type of business out there and come up with a number of points that would be assigned to that entity or that waste producing activity.
So do you have, do you have that information, do you have the actual tonnage or just the actual?
We anticipated volumes, we have volumes from reports that the haulers would give us, we don't.
So what if someone doesn't have a hauler?
Those are ones that we'd have to make an estimation on.
But I mean, my personal example, I have a dumpster and I serve three, three families. And my wife's, I mean, someone hauls their garbage over, so how would, how are you going to go into those details? How would, how would you treat that fairly? So I service three to four different, single-family homes.
Okay, so if you, as a resident, if it's, depends on how it's classed. So we're going to make this assumption on residential properties. If they're a little over, we're probably not going to mess with them. If they're, if it's a farm, we would take a look at that as an assessment. If, if we find out that it's just residential garbage, well then we would treat it just as, as any other residence. But some of it, some, this is not going to be necessarily real easy the first year, but.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if I'm real excited about it myself, but.
Well.
I got a question too, Steve.
Sure.
You have a business that has a garbage service. Do they keep track of that or do you estimate that?
We.
By the size of the dumpster?
If you have a dumpster that's reported to us.
Okay, but, but what if it's not?
It's not actual tonnage.
Yeah, it's not actual.
Well, you know, you have to make an assumption someplace and as long as you're doing it uniformly, hopefully it doesn't matter. So if, if you're waste hauler, and, and we do talk to them, so if it's a, let's say it's a seasonal business, they're going to give us the frequency of that collection, so if they shut off that collection in the wintertime, we wouldn't account for that.
I, I guess my question is what? I mean, we're not trying to assess more, what is the benefit? What is the benefit of this type, this assessment technique rather than what we're doing?
So in the past, when we had an assessment, we'd take the same volumes, but if we didn't know what that volume was, we might have had, we just made it, if they had a commercial classification, we just gave them a lump sum, 65 bucks or some number, right? If you had a business that generated a lot of waste, but it never got reported by a waste hauler, you'd have a big disparity between two different types of businesses. For example, if you had two restaurants, one got reported and one didn't, didn't, how would you know what that assessment should be? And.
The, the thing I'm, the concern I, or not the concern, but the, the thing is, it's $65 versus $100. I mean, I don't know if the dollar amount's going to be fairly small for the.
No.
You think you're going to, you see some commercial businesses being thousands of dollars and some being $10?
Yes, there, there's some discrepancies in there and part of it is you have turnover of staff, you don't have maybe not consistent reporting by haulers, you have, there's many, many different factors that come into place. You have some haulers that turn in reports that clearly the math is not correct. There's, so it takes a lot of work, but if, again, if you go back to this, if, if you have a report one year from a business and they generate so many cubic yards, let's say their solid waste assessment's $5,000, got a comparable one, I have no volume on, it would be, they should have an assessment as well. So you run into this discrepancy and, and some of this is going to be incumbent upon our staff to do more research.
But I guess the big concern I would have is if you have a eight, say eight yard dumpster and it's not full, but a, but a six yard isn't big enough, how do you account for that extra two yards that you'd get charged for for not filling it up?
You know, you would have no way of knowing, because the haulers know.
You'd have no way of knowing.
No, but you know, if you, I guess that would be, it would be.
Households the same.
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
Well, we'll have to continue this discussion because it's 10:45 and we are moving to zoning right on schedule, so thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
I know next meeting we'll have to make a decision, I, I encourage your committee to hammer through this, Richard and John, and, and give us a recommendation, but I would have a. No, no, I'm just saying at our next meeting. Probably have both options on, ready to go, because we'll have to, we'll have to move on at next meeting, right?
Okay.
Right?
Thanks, Steve.
Right. I mean, we have to make that decision. Okay. Kyle.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Three items for your consideration this morning. The first being a change of zone from agricultural to residential. Recommendation was to approve. You did see this one year ago last September. It failed on a 3-2 vote, we need a four-fifths majority for change of zones.
It's the first one. Page 58 there.
My first one is.
That is a loan application?
Yes. On the agenda, it's the first recommendation, letter A.
I'm on.
Is it the first one though?
I'm on eight, storage. New business, old business?
According to your guys' agenda this morning though, it's the first one, letter A. That storage one was a recommendation to Lake Unit Township. That was a supplemental plat, so that did not come before you.
Oh, it's, it's on, it's on 59, it's number three.
It's our number three on page two. Yeah. What, what is the acreage on this one?
Kevin, you want to come up and speak to this a little bit? So it has changed a little bit from the last last application, it was 12 acres for a remnant tract. Tract A was 1.5 acres and tract B was 1.53. Kevin also owns some land to the north where he's proposing to make three more tracts, which is a separate parcel. I may approach, I'll show you.
62,000, so acre and a half, 90,000 and 85,000. Five, two acres on each one of those.
What is, what's the neighborhood next door, there's a neighborhood right next door?
Yeah, just to.
Uh, that's Highview Oaks.
I'll figure those lots.
Residential. They vary from an acre on up or so.
And that's just across the road, right?
Uh, kitty corner.
Yeah.
It's to the east west, right?
So previously on, on this application, we were only looking at Tuvor 0237, which was the biggest tract, and now we're looking at the tract as well to the north, which will be an additional three parcels.
Well, as you know, I've never supported residential out in the rural, to get down to that one acre lot.
Right.
I, I don't see myself changing my opinion on it. I think we are, we have, we have rural, rural areas are not, you don't, people, people overbuild on everything they have. It's my opinion and I don't believe that one acre lots out in residential in country are adequate. So I won't, I don't plan on changing my vote.
Understood.
It's my, my opinion and, and the rest of the board can.
I think in this case, because they're, I mean, while it is rural, we do, we do have a development very close by that has similar acreage.
And one acre is enough for septic systems, so.
So are we just looking for a motion?
Yeah, motion.
I just, I just want to confirm how big those lots are there in Highview Oaks, just so I'm giving you accurate info.
What is the area of, of area going to residential then? What's the total air acreage?
It's going to be, let's.
Because once you've owned a residential, he can change it however he wants and.
It's going to be, so 15 acres is the south parcel and the north parcel is 90, 80 and 60, around six acres, so you're looking at 21 acres total.
So you're looking at 21 acres that can be, as, if you change zone, can be up to, how many lots? Probably 20 lots?
I'm thinking 10, maybe 11.
Well, but, but what you're saying, what you can, what you can do and what you will do are two different things. I mean, I, I don't know what your intentions are and we can't, once, once this goes through, we can't, we can't have, we don't have any say of that. I mean, if, is that correct, Kyle? If it's, if it's zone residential, that those lots can come in?
Yes.
At, at, you can formulate it however. At, at, you can form it, formulate it however you want, however you choose. You show us a map today and it can be completely different. Because once it's zoned residential, we have no say in how you divide that as lo, besides square footage.
That's.
So that's, that's what you're doing. So know what you're doing if you're going to do it.
So just, just to confirm, I said an acre in Highview Oaks. The smallest in there looks to be about one point two-six and then on up.
And the minimum county standards for residential acreage is one?
One acre.
So you are approving one-acre lots, you possibly. So entertain a motion.
I make a motion to go with planning and zoning.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? This needs a four-fifths majority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. I'm going to take a roll call just to make sure. John?
Aye.
Erica?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Barry? Nay?
Richard? Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second item, conditional use permit to operate a convenience store and gas station.
Any testimony?
I, I imagine there will be some.
So the order we'll go in today, we'll have the, you want the applicant first to explain their application to the?
Yeah.
Then we'll take those, those in favor and then those opposed. We have had numerous calls, emails, and conversations. I'm sure you probably all know that. So if you, if I'm going to open it up for those people to speak, please try to keep your thoughts into your testimony, into factual, factual things. And, and if it's been said, you know, try to keep, try not to re, keep reiterating the same, same points over and over. But want to give everyone opportunity to, to have their, have their say. But again, try not to just keep reiterating the same points or do it very quickly. Maximum anyone should be up discussing this would be two, three minutes, so.
Good morning. My name is John Lawrie. I'm, uh, Florey Engineering and, and civil engineer in Fargo and, or North Dakota and Minnesota. Chair and commissioners, I appreciate the time and your consideration on our application here for a conditional use permit to operate a gas station and convenience store.
Kyle, do you have maps, specific maps for this? Do you have maps for us? For where the?
This property is located near the intersection of South Shore Drive and two-hundred-and-seventieth Street. You know, South Shore, you're, where with that, where that's at, and two-hundred-and-seventieth Street's a section line road. You know, there's a lot of history with this, uh, property. And we initially began this process in May, June of two thousand and twenty-two, when Jason Garrick, the, the developer and landowner, purchased this property for development. And with meetings with the city and review of the two thousand and twenty long-term growth plan of the city of Detroit Lakes, it was, the request was made for neighborhood commercial or commercial land at the intersection of South Shore and two-hundred-and-seventieth Street. And through this, at that point in time, we, we submitted a plat and an annexation plat with a rezone, uh, consistent with what, uh, city planning, city council, and city staff supported at that point in time, which was commercial zoning at the intersection of, uh, two-hundred-and-seventieth and South Shore Drive. We brought that application forward to, uh, city, uh, through the city process. And with staff support, uh, it was a specific request of, uh, city members that a gas station would be good on this corner. And through the process, there, there's a lot of things that have been brought up. Safety is a big one, environmental safety, enjoyment of your property. And just a couple key points, you know, to, uh, Chair Nelson said it, to stay within the truth and the facts of the situation. And, and the truth is, is that, that the landing, the boat landing and the location of this property has been what it is. Section line roads are busy roads and they sm, support commercial business. And the city had effective planning, does have effective planning with their long-term growth plan to have commercial, neighborhood commercial, that's going to support the rest of the growth to the south of Detroit Lakes. It's also true that a gas station is a good use here. Uh, there is a boat landing that's been there long before many, if not all of the residents that currently are along South Shore Drive own that property, that this is a busy place, and that there are needs to service those existing uses, not to mention the future uses that are going to occur. Studies have been done regarding traffic regarding, uh, for convenience stores. There's actually a study, uh, mentioned with planning and zoning that was done by the, uh, Electric Car Commission. Basically, I don't know the exact group in California, saying why aren't electric vehicles taking off? It's because it's not convenient to charge them. They have to drive out of their way to get it. Some studies say two, three blocks, some state, studies say up to six minutes out of your way. And the, and the truth is, is that convenience stores don't attract additional traffic. They support existing traffic that's in the area. And if anything, it's going to keep the traffic on South Shore going around the lake, back to the north side of town, down. I'd also add that, uh, there, there's additional residential that is planned for this area. If done correctly, which is what we intend to do, convenience stores and gas stations can fit well as a neighborhood support. And we discussed that at length when the neighborhood commercial zoning. So we brought forth an application that was denied for commercial zoning. Detroit Lakes did not have a neighborhood commercial zoning that was consistent with what their long-term growth plan called for. They created a neighborhood commercial zoning, and I believe planning and zoning recommended that gas stations be included. And then, uh, at the council level, i- it was taken out. As a part of this process, uh, because our annexation application was denied, we, we, well within our right, we brought this conditional use permit, not under the cover of darkness, because it was an option to us to bring it to the county and get a conditional use permit to put a gas station in. Uh, the owner has had some, uh, potential buyers reach out to him with interest, has agreements signed that are conditioned upon getting the zoning in place, uh, for a gas station and convenience store. So, um, I'm here to answer any other questions. I, I just close that, that, you know, the truth, truth of the situation is that the city staff did believe that this was safe, did believe that a gas station could be done without negatively impacting beyond a reasonable expectation, enjoyment of neighboring properties, that environmentally it can be done safe, and that good thought and foresight has been put into this. It's not something that's done haphazardly. And I would argue that it, it's more about the location of it. It's okay in neighborhoods, but maybe just not in this neighborhood. So.
Does the, I think the applicant does, owns the piece just north of that, adjoining the public access, that next parcel?
That is correct. The north parcel is within city limits.
Okay, so the south parcel is not, that's.
That's correct. That's a quarter line of that section and, and the south parcel is not. There were some conditions put on this property, uh, for approval of the conditional use permit, uh, orientation of the building to reduce impacts of lighting on neighboring properties. Um, you know, our site plan had some, uh, that we originally did, had some parking on the city property. It was conditioned that it would be all on county property, which he, he owns a large chunk here. This is representing a small parcel, uh, that, that would be, had the conditional use applied. Um, we fully intend to follow all DNR and MPCA requirements and all, uh, local laws and regulations, as well as the conditions that were put on it by planning and zoning with their recommendation for approval.
So that's, is that the old?
That is. Yep, yep. That, that's a preliminary site plan. Uh, everything would be shifted south and reorientated based on.
And moved, and moved south.
Correct. Yep. With no access up to South Shore Drive.
How did, how did you come up with the size, like the number of pumps and the size of the store?
You know, uh, the size shown here is arbitrary. It's, it's not the final site plan that, that's going to be brought forward. But we've done a number of convenience stores and gas stations. They all range in forty-five hundred to sixty-five hundred square feet. And I think the, uh, potential buyers were looking at, uh, the, the number of filling stations that are proposed here. Kyle, remind me, I, I don't know that, uh, there was any conditions on the number of pumps from planning and zoning, so.
No.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. And we may, may have questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else speaking in support of the applicant? Anyone speeding in, speaking in support? Right, now I'll just, uh, recog, if, if you want, wish to speak opposing this, I'll recognize you. So try to get my, like an auctioneer, I'll try to, um, see who, see who's next. So anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I see a hand raised over here first. Come up, uh, when you come up here, please state your name, um, for the record. And, uh, feel free to take, um, again, try to, try to limit yours to a couple, couple minutes.
Will do.
We'll, we'll be, we'll be, try to appease you, but, uh, or to be accommodating, but uh, we'll have to get through today, through to this today, too.
Got it. Uh, Mike Heybrett, please ignore my uniform. Um, I'm here on personal time, representing my wife and I. We live at six fifty South Shore Drive. Um, I will be able to see the gas station out of my kitchen window. Um, I'm just going to, I'm sure there'll be some more emotional type things that'll be brought up later. So I'll just kind of stick to, it's been a lot of meetings. We, I've been to most of them. My wife's been to more of them. Um, some of the things that keep being brought up are, they're, they're trying to respect the investment of the developer. I would say that the cost of my house and my neighbor's house is equal to what the developer spent, and that was in two thousand seventeen. So we have to consider the impacts, like, I understand he spent over two million dollars for development property, but, uh, as, uh, you mentioned, it's not a normal neighborhood. Okay? Um, the other one is the comprehensive plan. I want to get this number right. The comp, the community comprehensive plan is two hundred and twenty-four pages long. I just looked. Okay? Now, I understand there was citizen input taken on the plan, but it's two hundred and twenty-four pages. If somebody took the time to look through it, are they going to, what's the chances they happen to cross the one page of the map that indicated the city staff wanted a convenience store on that corner? I'd say it's probably pretty low. As someone who writes long-range plans for statewide impacts, I'm fully aware of how these things work, right? You just don't get the input you need because people just don't know about it. Um, lastly, because of all the meetings, I think it's been like six or seven, this is obviously an end around to his, get his gas station, right? There's a reason where he's not asking you to rezone the remainder of that property, because if he gets his gas station through county, he's then going to go to the city and have that zone and annexed, right? Smaller lots, city sewer and water, less money for development. So this, and, and as you mentioned, this is in his right, right? It is county property. But what happens to this little island of county property that's going to be surrounded by the city? Well, two, three, four years, hey, makes sense. We might as well just annex this gas station, right? It's already built.
If, if, correct me if I'm wrong, probably Ron might have an answer to this, but the city wouldn't annex and leave an island out there at this time. That, it would be, if it was annexed, it would be completely annexed with, with a non-conforming use, I would assume, in, in, included.
Right, right.
So it's not going to be, um, islands are not.
So.
Sought after.
Under, that's right. My point is, dad told him no, now he's going to mom. Right? And then he's going to come back and say, well, mom said yes.
Okay, and, uh, a point, point taken. Let's try to keep.
Okay, that, that's all, that's all I have.
Um, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
And I have the map up here, um, so I, so we can see the proximity to a lot of the, um, a lot of your residents up here, so. Um, go ahead.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's been a long morning. Uh, my name is Mary Mary. I live at five sixty South Shore Drive. So I will be looking straight across at, um, at this property, pretty much. It's going to be down, you know, a few feet, a few feet from where I live, uh, this gas station. Um, I can't find any evidence for the need of a gas station in my neighborhood. I'd like to know one fact, one piece of evidence showing that there's a need for a gas station in my neighborhood. I can get to a gas station from my home in six to seven minutes. Um, what about the effect on our neighborhood? There's going to be so many detrimental side effects for us. The safety, as you know, Detroit Lakes built this beautiful park. It's right across from this gas station. And it's heavily used by families and by children, children that are riding their bikes there. And for anyone to believe that this is not going to increase our truck traffic on those roads, they're asking you to buy a bridge and know, who knows where. Uh, it is going to increase the truck traffic. There has to be gas supplied to those tanks. There has to be product supplied to this convenience store. And we're going to have heavy truck traffic, along with, they're claiming that we're going to have all the boat people coming over there to fill up, fill up gas. Um, I would ask you to think about the effect on my neighborhood of the odor, the noise, the light pollution to all of our homes from this site. Finally, our beautiful Detroit Lake. We're going to have huge gas tanks, uh, put in at this site. We're all, they're also proposing, because they don't have any water or sewer, they're going to have to put in a sewer system. And, uh, that also is going to present risk to our lake. Section eight of your ordinance states that the extent of shoreland areas for the public water bodies shall include all land within the following distances, one thousand feet from the ordinary high water level of, of a lake. This entire structure is going to be in that shoreland area. Also, from what I read in your ordinances, you must give notice of this application to the DNR. Now, whether the DNR cares about this, I don't know. But you must give notice to the DNR. I know you know your ordinances, but I'm just going to remind you that this ordinance is enacted for the following purposes: to promote and protect the health, safety, and general welfare throughout Becker County; to conserve the value of properties and encourage the most appropriate use of land; to conserve the economic and natural environmental values of shorelands. And I'm going to end with asking you, what are the benefits to my neighborhood of a gas station? There's only one person who's going to benefit from that, and that is Garrick. Thank you for listening to.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
Okay, and Beck?
Yep.
My name is Joel Olson. I own a lake home at five twenty-four South Shore Drive. And I, in typical fashion, just have to get my two cents in. And so, uh, I'll undoubtedly sit down and remember what I should have said, since I don't have any notes. But I appeal to, um, you know, our sense of safety. Uh, we've got a playground in close proximity to where this gas station is going to be. And, uh, and, uh, my God, I, I live, um, too close to the boat launch facility. And so I witnessed, on days of heavy traffic, uh, parking with boats and pickups and so on on both sides of the street. South Shore Drive is a, a, not a, not a big, uh, not a big street. And, uh, we should not, um, expose, you know, our, our people to more traffic. And of course, there will be more traffic. Uh, another thing that I was thinking of is who in their right mind would want to buy a lot and build a house in close. in close proximity to a gas station? I, I don't think any of us would. Anyway, that's, that's my two cents. So thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
Ron, three minutes now. And we all know Ron, he can go on.
Well, his phone might ring, so you never know.
Well, I'm Ron Zeeman, and I am on the city council. And this has been on a discussion for a long, long time. And yes, we did vote for a business residential neighborhood. But that didn't mean we're gonna have a strip center, didn't mean we're gonna have a gas station. We voted down a gas station 100%. We didn't want to have a gas station there. We have to remember, we want to have low-traffic businesses there. We're talking about a flower shop, maybe an optical company there for eyeglasses and optometry, maybe a dental office. But we certainly weren't looking at a 6,500 square foot business with a convenience store that's right across the street from this brand-new park. Now, Detroit Lakes does need housing space in a big, big way. And this is an entry for us going south. And we're hoping that the county sees the need of that, too. Because as we grow, the county also grows. And we need single-family housing, we need space for twin homes, we need place for apartments. But we really don't need a gas station in that particular area. The residents want to keep their residential area residential. They've got beautiful homes out there, they take care of them. They came here for retirement. They didn't come here, if they want to go shopping, they could, they could have built next door to a shopping center. They came here for family recreation, peace, and quiet, and enjoy their homes. So I'm hoping that you'll consider having low-traffic businesses and not having a gas station that's right up front and center, and especially when it's across from this brand-new park. And think about the future of Detroit Lakes for our growth. This is what, this is all about, growth going south for expansion of our city as we grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Okay.
My name is Marsha Congdon. I don't live on South Shore Drive, and I'm still opposed to the project. I have owned car washes in Detroit Lakes, Fergus Falls, Lamedge, and 11 of them in Omaha, five gas stations in Omaha. I wouldn't build one next to my home, would not put one next to my home, or across the street from my home, or near neighbors and people I was concerned about. That's just, I would never do it, wouldn't done, and I haven't done it. I bike around the lake all the time. South Shore Drive getting through that area is a bear, if you're a biker, because of everybody who parks, the extra cars, the extra impact. After WeFest, I was biking around and got harassed by WeFest people leaving on South Shore Drive. A bike alone, I'm a woman, four guys in a pickup harassing me as I biked. The impact on this to South Shore Drive and the people who enjoy it, and to that park. I biked on Sunday. There were cars parked all along South Shore Drive and people going into, with their kids to use the paddle bar, paddleboard courts. There were people biking with their kids. Like, as a past developer, I'm kind of appalled. But somebody wants to get their money, and I understand that. And developing for residential is gonna be a longer-term project for the developer who would like, who bought the land and now would like to get his money out. I appreciate that, I've done it myself. But I wouldn't do it to a lovely community, to neighbors, friends, and put it in a residential area next to a huge recreation area. So I speak as somebody who's walked in both shoes, and I think this would be a mistake. I've lived in Becker County since 1986. I've had rural property, I've had residential property, I've had commercial property downtown. I've had businesses. This one is just, from all kinds of aspects, in my view, a loser. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marsha.
Thank you, Marsha.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Dizzy. I live at 554 South Shore Drive, so right across from the residential lots. And I have a very young family, and we just moved to this house one year ago. I am the one with the little kids who just learned how to ride their bikes that are cruising on South Shore Drive right over the new park. And I know we've talked a lot about traffic and things like that. But when you are actually on the road biking with your little kid that just learned how to bike, right there at that drive down 270th, there's a big curve. And those trees come all the way out to the road. You can't see cars coming from East Shore Drive. It's, it's a tight corner. So this plan that they have here, I know they said it's not gonna come onto South Shore. I don't understand how you could have the drive from the gas station coming right out at the park. If you do propose that, all of these, they're saying the public access, all the boat traffic that would be turning in there. I mean, pontoon trailers driving out that driveway with the park right there is just, I don't know how my kids would cross the street. I, I've walked it multiple times just this weekend. It's how could my kids get across the street safely in that area? And that's what, it's very concerning for me. Not only with the South Shore traffic, but just if there is a gas station there, how would we safely get them to the park? And it might take walking on South Shore Drive to realize, you know, people speed, they go way too fast on that road. But it's a big concern and one that I would love to be addressed. My other concern with that would be boats parking with their trailers all along. Because maybe they don't want to go all the way down 270th, so they just run, get their snacks or whatever. How, how would that affect the driveways that they're proposing for their residential here? If they're gonna have all these driveways out in front, where would all these boat trailers be parking now? Would they be parking on my side of the road, right in front of our house? I think there's a lot of little logistics that need to be considered. And then the only other thing I wanted to bring up was there was a planning commissioner who stated that where his house was, and I happen to know him, he said it'd be two minutes or 10 minutes to get gas. And the fact is, anywhere on that road, it's six minutes to get gas. If we did put the gas station here, it'd take him three minutes. And to get to County Highway 6, it's five minutes from his house. So we're splitting hairs, it's two minutes. I hope you guys consider.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Delta Daggett. I live on Lake Forest Circle, about a half a block from the park. So I'm in the, in that neighborhood. First, I'd like to thank you five commissioners for the time you spent every month determining your, your decisions affect the residents of the county. We thank you. Secondly, many of us here are in opposition to this. Some of us are in red to signify our opposition to items B and C on your agenda. Commissioner Jepson and Ann Meyer, I don't know if you're aware of that when you addressed this morning, but thank you for your support. But, no, this is serious, this is a residential agriculture area. Items, the B especially, would affect the character and ambience of that whole area. I was at the planning board meeting both on the 30th and yesterday. After listening, if, I think the, the planning board members did not, after looking at the minutes of the meeting, and the people that testified in opposition and for it, the ones in opposition were far out, were far outnumbered those in support, both in testimony and in written, to, written statements to the planning board. I think the planning board erred in their decision to recommend this. And I asked the Board of Commissioners, be aware of our feelings when you do make this, we are the ones that are gonna be affected by the, by the change in zoning. Any questions? Thanks for your time.
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, please come forward.
Good morning. I am Anne Marie Bergerson. I live at 633 South Shore Drive. And I appreciate all your time and, and listening to all of us about this property. I want to first say I'm all for development. I know that the city is starting to grow. It's just, I, I think this is a premature project. I'm not for a gas station on the corner. My question would be, when this was brought forward, and the plan was brought forward, I heard it was through some council members that it was talked about, did anybody survey or ask the residents what they, if there was a need for a gas station? Would be my question. I know I wasn't approached, I can only speak for myself, but nobody came forward to, to do that. And that's something I would recommend before, you know, putting in a gas station on the corner with a convenience store.
Just, just to, just to touch base on that, I, in my opinion, I think the board would probably agree. That's, that is the developers, I mean, if you're proposing a business, your, your business model would have to either do that or it's, it's not a county.
Okay.
I don't think that would be a county or a city. I mean, that, that's not, wouldn't be our role. That would be the person wanting that development.
That was my question, is that he didn't come forward to ask any of us.
That's, that's either their, you know, that's their discretion, whether they, they're making assumptions or they're, so.
Yeah, that was just something that I, that I recommend, is the need piece of it.
I just wanted to make sure that's not our role.
No, Barry, you're fine, you're fine. No, I just wanted to get that out there to say it would have been nice if he would have come around. I think we wouldn't be having, you know, a year's worth of meetings and sitting here today. But I know I only have a few minutes. I have a concern with the fact that there was a planning member who talked to a resident and had said, and I've handled this issue with his higher-up, had said that this was already decided on to approve this before they even met at the last planning meeting. And that, to me, is just unethical behavior. And that's, that's all I have to say, is to take into consideration us that do live on South Shore. It does affect us, and I appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to make a comment publicly?
Good morning. I'm Amber Abraham. I'm here with my husband, Lucas. We live at 641 South Shore Drive. We are three homes from 270th, from the proposed gas station. We just moved there a couple of years ago, it's, you know, to a better home, to a nice neighborhood. We picked it because it was family. These neighborhoods are few and far between nowadays. It has the charm, I mean, we're kind of rural, we have a beautiful park that everyone talks about. The pedestrian traffic, the biking, I mean, this is a destination, not to go shopping, not to get gas, but to come out and enjoy nature. I don't think that this should be taken lightly. This should be something that should be planned. There is technology nowadays where we don't have to guess if we have the traffic flow to keep a business going. Planning has evolved since, even our comprehensive plan has been completed for the city in 2020. It was revised. I'm not sure if the county, I believe you guys are relooking at revamping your, your comprehensive plan. The technology is amazing, I'm in the field. This should not be taken lightly. A gas station is not something you can just take away because it didn't work out, or take away because we decided, yeah, it's not a good fit for the community. I would like it if it was thought through more. There are better places for this. There are, there's no need for a gas station across from a park. I mean, these are kids, they're not fully thinking. I did send pictures yesterday, I don't know if you guys had time to look at them, of what it's like for our biking traffic out there when there's cars parked on the shoulder, there's a bike going by, and then there's a car behind it. That's the same with walking, running, little kids, people of all ages. There's lots of blind spots out there. Now imagine tankers coming. It's dangerous. Like, there are issues that should be addressed prior to placing anything commercial over there. It really should be. Everything else I agree with. Thank you for your time, and thank you for everyone who has taken the time today to come and speak on this matter. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sheila Finneseth, and me and my husband live at 622 South Shore Drive. And I'm here, I agree with all the residents that have gotten up to speak. We're in support of commercial development. We don't feel that it belongs in this particular neighborhood or in anybody's neighborhood in Detroit Lakes. 130 people signed a petition that went around for a couple hours in the neighborhood in both South Shore Drive and Lake Forest Drive. And on that petition, it listed all the reasons with which mirror reasons that have been talked about today as well. And then it also offered a solution. Nobody's against commercial development, it doesn't belong there. Let's put it in place where there's higher traffic and a higher chance of having that business have a success. We all want to see the city grow. And one of the things that I have done is I've spent the last 11 months going to meetings, reading all the meeting notes. At this point, I've seen two people who have got up and said they're for this gas station. And as you can see today, nobody stood up in support of it, other than the developer. So another thing, we keep talking about how fast South Shore is developing. It is developing, but it's not fast. We bought a cabin 16 years ago. Marty Solomon had just started his development. I went back to the Becker County records last night, there's a home on record being built in 2001. So that development has been in place at least 22 years. I also went into the parcel section, and there are 23 open lots in that development. So I think this is very premature. I think that the planning committee at Becker County met for less than an hour to discuss something that's gonna change our neighborhoods forever. And this isn't just South Shore Drive. This is any area where it lines up between Becker County and the city. And he is going around the city because they turned him down twice to get what he wants to put this gas station there. So I thank you for your time and your consideration. This has been going on 11 months, and I hope that you voted down, just like the city did twice.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I think we're getting towards the end of, anyone else? Yes?
My name is Karen, and I live in 715 Lake Forest in that community. Something was brought up this morning that are the county roads built to maintain tanker traffic or semis or the heavy equipment that would be going over those roads? Or would those roads have to be rebuilt? And how about even South Shore Drive? Heading over to County Road 278, is there concern about the roads being able to handle that traffic?
If it's, I don't, I would assume that's a nine-ton road, and it's up to the, up to the drivers of any vehicles to drive within the rules of the, the weight limit. So if it's, if it's not, they would, they'd be subject to having partial loads, if, if that's, if it isn't a nine-ton road, I believe.
Summertime would be nine, 10-ton road.
Yeah, and in the frost times of the year, it's reduced tonnage for that road.
Okay. Yeah, because it would be nice to know that now in regard to voting, or how you vote, if those roads are gonna have to be rebuilt in order to accommodate that type of traffic.
The roads would not be rebuilt to accommodate that traffic. That traffic would have to accommodate to the road restrictions. I mean, so that, for that question.
All right, thank you.
If the traffic got to a point where it's unbearable, then whoever's responsible for a road would address those improvements at that time.
And the other issue, I know it's been brought up several times regarding the traffic. Anybody who lives there or visits, or just takes a nice drive around the lake, can see, even with the necessary equipment parked alongside the roads for building the homes, you know, that traffic will move on eventually when the homes are completed. But right now, it's so congested with building, construction vehicles that this gas station will bring traffic. that this gas station will bring traffic. It doesn't matter what they say. It's going to bring traffic that's going to go on for the lifetime of that station. And it's going to bring in semis. It's going to bring in the food vendors. So I know it's been brought up before, but it's on my mind, I'm sure it's on everyone's mind, that it is going to bring, it is going to increase a type of traffic that's not advantageous to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, if there's no one else, last call. Okay, and again, this, we are going to, when I ask for discussion from now on, it's going to be board discussion. Not if you have something absolutely changed, you know, you can ask to be recognized, raise your hand, but I don't necessarily think you will be called upon by myself or the board chair from now on. So if you, you're not free to speak like we were before, so please, need to be recognized before you do. Now we'll ask the board, any discussion points? And if anyone has any.
You know, moves forward, we can add stipulations to this?
Correct.
I'd like to offer one and propose that you move the whole site to minimum of 300 feet south of the planned location.
I think one, my concern too is the Shoreland District, which is 1,000 feet from the lake. I think that 1,000-foot mark is, there is reasons why that's called the Shoreland District. That would be, I mean, I'm not saying I can support this either way at this time. I'm still going in my mind, but 1,000 feet would be something that I would say has to be. The second thing, you know, if you could pull the map back up. I mean, we, you do have, it's a gem of a piece of property and it's going to be developed. And I think, I think, no offense to the developers, and I know Jason very well. I think this has an opportunity to be a really, a good development. And I think by, I don't think we're seeing the big picture on it because we're just seeing a hodgepodge right now of a gas station going in one. I can, I'll give you my thoughts, and this is just my opinion thinking up. I would, if I was a developer, I would put that gas station 1,000 feet back in the, not in the middle of the property here, but back off the road, kind of straight south of the, of the gas station, I mean, of the access. And connect, having connecting road through and make that development, make the whole development, you know, encompassing, you know, surrounding it. So you've got houses in between, you know, new house. So now if you buy a lot, you know that there's a gas station going to be there. That's kind of what, then you have the buffers of multiple houses between you and any new house. Or any, any new houses would be buffering the old. I do think, I think the point was made right away. This area, this is the most taxed, I mean, this is the highest property value that we have in the county on Detroit Lakes. So I think it is a little bit more crucial in this area to recognize that. I was looking at some of the, some of the conditions that the zoning had on it was, and one of them, I'm trying to figure out where I'm back here. One of them was 50% light. Well, you can't go 50% light reduction because you could have such bright lights that 50% would be more bright than, you know, you look at the lighting now. If you reduce something 50%, it, you know, if you start with brighter than what you need, you can reduce it to full. So I think the directional lighting would be something that you would specifically want, directional downlighting.
That's in there also.
It wasn't directional, though.
Yeah, that was one.
One of my.
They were both added on yesterday, both directional.
It was light deflectors is what it was.
Oh, thank you.
Yep. So to direct it downward.
Yes. Okay, I'm getting back to my findings page here. So I think some of those, I mean, if you had access on both routes, I mean, the development of this whole parcel to have a walking path, bike trail through there to the park to help alleviate some of the concerns of safety would greatly enhance. But again, this is a, this is the developers' only proposal in front of us is the gas station. There's no, the commercial property, there's no other commercial property proposed on this parcel. The other, the commercial property on letter C is for the next item, not for this item.
Correct. That item is located in Wolf Lake.
Yeah, so the item C is not.
How far is that from the lake now, where the proposed site?
I would estimate.
300 feet?
Four, five?
400 feet. That's all further than that. Roughly measure after they move it.
To the quarter line, it's 470 or so. Which is what separates the city parcel from the county parcel. So that highlighted blue line is about 470 feet.
Is there, is there the available area for them to go with 1,000 feet?
They own, yeah, they own the whole, they own the whole parcel.
The only thing I would say about 1,000 feet on 270 is now you're right in front of those five houses.
And that's where, that's where I'd say, I mean, if I did support this, it would have to be a residential along the road. This, like the developer said, this is not a destination gas station. This is to service those in the community. So if you have the housing between, a housing row between the road and any other, then you're, then you're not negative, you're getting housing next to housing. And then all the housing that, the housing that's being, would be sold, the new housing, they know what, then they know that there's a gas station there. But there's plenty of room within that gas, that property to put a gas station well away from negatively affecting neighbors. So my concerns are some safety concerns and negatively impacting the residents in that area. I think there's enough room to move it away from them.
Can we stay away from the existing houses if we move it south?
Oh, well, then you'd have to go west as well. But if he goes south, it's just like Commissioner Meyer stated, you'd be directly across. Well, if you're on 270th, yeah.
You could have a set, you could have a setback off 270th also.
Can we, can you come up? I just want to hear your feedback from that proposal of going south and west.
Yeah, I think John Lawrie again, representing Jason Garrick. You know, convenience stores need to be convenient and the buyers wouldn't be interested if it's not fronting a section line around there or either South Shore or 270th. I think the location that we proposed is not fronting any residences and probably has, is the least impact on the neighboring properties while also maintaining the convenience of the location that garners interest from convenience stores operators.
And where, where does it, is it in our zoning ordinance, the 1,000 feet off the lakeshore?
The zoning ordinance states that 1,000 feet is the Shoreland District.
1,000 feet from a lake is 200 feet from a river.
That's the Shoreland.
There are filling stations on lakes. It can be done respectfully and responsibly within the Shoreland District. We intend on doing that and following all local rules and regulations in order to provide that within. And also, there's extra zoning provisions within that Shoreland District to ensure that that is preserved. And we intend on following all of those within that 1,000-foot setback.
Well, I won't support it within 1,000 feet. That's plain and simple. I don't know what the wishes of the board, if you want to. The rest of you want to have any more dialogue?
I'd like to actually have the distance from high water mark to, say, movement at 250, 300 feet south of the proposed.
Is the concern the gas tanks specifically?
For sure, within 1,000 feet, probably, yes.
Yeah, and I, you know, we can certainly locate the gas tanks in a location where they're the furthest from. My only concern, and this was actually brought up at planning and zoning, is if you move the gas station south, now you're picking neighbors to upset. And that's not right either.
Well, I was out there and looked at it. 250 feet would put you just the south side of the city park. There's no houses directly across.
Sure. I think that location would be acceptable and then locating the gas tanks responsibly.
I did get a call from that neighbor that said that he was not in support of having a gas station in front of his place.
So where would 1,000 feet be from the lake, from the lakeshore? Would it be?
That'd be right at the south, right at the south end of the DL property line, I would imagine, in that.
Are you sure that's not? Is it? I might have measured wrong, but I thought it would be right in those houses.
Well, it would be. I would assume it would be right in that.
Right, I think it would line up right like on the middle house, maybe. I don't know. I just eyeballed it.
This one's 450.
And I didn't have my ruler. No, I measured off.
I measured it. The county has a very useful, and we're getting it up online, a very useful tool to measure feet. Kyle's going to show where 1,000 feet would be. I think the commissioners have stated, we've all used that to see where 1,000 foot would be away from the lake for our, for our. And I just, I just want to be clear with my statement. I would also, for my support, I'd need at least one building, one row of houses along 170th. So to buffer those houses. Or plus or minus up in the, plus or minus in the left.
The line's south of the lake. That's a city limit sign there.
The purple line, the purple line right there is city, city, yep.
So Shoreland is going to be double spaces.
Yep, that's about 450.
It's about the park boundary.
Right, it would be the park.
That's, yeah, that's what I kind of estimated myself.
So it would be the park boundary or would it be the city lot? Right there, where the cursor is.
Well, that's the Shoreland.
Do you have the measurement up?
Uh, no, but I did. It's 1,008 feet is what we had on there.
Okay, so that dot's 1,000, right where that arrow is, is 1,000 feet. So the first house there would be, it would be right in front of that first out at 1,000.
What's between, that square is the park that we're looking at?
Well, I think that square is the city lot.
Oh, that's, where is the park at? That's the above the square?
Those squiggly lines?
Yep.
That's the park.
All the way in from.
Is there houses right across?
That square a lot is the pickleball court, isn't it?
Just start throwing it at the parcel number.
That's the pickleball.
Well, that's the pickleball court.
Yep.
I'd like to reiterate, you know, the question on safety, this being safe within 1,000 feet of the lake has been asked and answered and proven through the MPCA. There's regulations, there's tank requirements on this. Tanks put in the ground today are in a much different capacity. There's pressure sensors. When there's a leak, they know what's going on.
I have, I have stated that to people who called me too. I'm not concerned about the, the tanks themselves are double walled. I mean, I think they're inspected annually. It's the, it's a proximity to lake residents and to lake traffic and the aesthetics of the community is kind of the negative for a gas station to be within that. I think that Shoreland District is higher, there's higher scrutiny in that because of the lake, the lake property, so, and the lake.
Sure.
Not necessarily just petroleum products.
Understood. In the additional regulations that are put on to account for that additional scrutiny, we would be fully willing to follow and even exceed. We've talked about buffer zones and some other things that was discussed with the city and discussed with the planning board. And, you know, I can't stress it enough. There's a lot of discussion about commercial uses and this and that. It's not a high, intense, heavy commercial use that we're proposing here. This is something that, you know, we're intending on building houses next to, that Jason is. It's to be done in a respectful manner. There are architectural controls that will be placed on this property so that it looks nice. But I respect the board with, I just wanted to reiterate within 1,000 feet, but we were more than willing to, you know, place the tanks as far south as possible while also, you know, considering the lighting and those impacts with the neighboring property owners.
All right. So you're saying, just to be clear, that if you can't be on the frontage of the road, you're not interested, you're not interested in us trying to amend this off the road? Is that correct?
I believe that to be true. That's correct.
Okay, so I'm not going to work on, work on those changes?
Thank you.
Okay. The applicant has asked on that location, I think he said they're willing to move south or not. They're not willing to move off frontage of the road. There has been some more stipulations from the findings and I think we're all emailed those. Now I'm on the different page. Kyle, would you read those off from the planning and zoning?
The conditions?
The conditions that they, they added on after the facts and finding.
So along from the original meeting, the first condition, or the two conditions there were turning the gas station completely 90 degrees and then moving the parking off of the city property. The six that were added yesterday are lighting be reduced to 50% after closing hours, garbage to be fenced and screened from public view, no lording signage posted, four-foot contiguous living or structural fence must be constructed on the northwest and south sides where vegetation will be established, that light deflectors be added to the canopy to direct light downward instead of outward, and they must inquire with Lakeview Township as to whether they would maintain a crosswalk between the gas station and the park if one was installed, and if the township agrees to maintain one, then one must be installed. So eight total.
How are you going to regulate the 50% after closing hours? How would you regulate that? How would you, how would you identify?
I think what they were.
I mean, how do you, you get, you know what I'm saying. If you have the very bright light and reduce it, now you're at normal. I mean, what is the?
I don't know. Yesterday, the discussion, and I wish, one of those members who brought that forward was talking about driving around individually, and I don't know if it was necessarily brightness or the amount of lighting. I think it was probably more the amount of lighting, like if you go by, I think Senex was referenced, that they just eliminate lighting on the property, not the brightness itself. And I, that was the.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Kyle.
So the lighting, the lighting, the total lighting is reduced?
Yes.
Did they mention, did they, does anyone address the advertising signs or the lighting signs that you're going to be using for advertising?
So, again, in the application, it says to be determined. All they are allowed by ordinance is 35 square feet. And there's not a dimension on that. It's not 5 or 7.
If you're the property across the road and now there's a light directly across from you, that wasn't addressed or that was just allowed, whatever is allowed by our ordinance is going to be allowed on that property?
Correct. Signage has had very, I don't even remember any discussion on it. Again, the application says to be determined. All they're allowed is 35 square feet.
Okay. What are our options? Do vote yes, vote no, or table, correct? Do we have opportunity to table or not?
Correct. The application payment was received August 23rd, so you have 60 days from that timeline with the option to extend that an additional 60 days.
So you know your options.
120.
Are you, anyone entertaining a decision?
Well, I think we need to add in there before we make a motion on it that these additional stipulations is move further south, tanks.
250 feet.
And then tanks located outside the shore impact area.
Yeah, and then that isn't going to, you know, and that's fine, but that, them tanks leaking ain't going to matter whether they're right at the lake or, you know, it's all sand there. They're going to go down, so. And we have, I'm not worried about those tanks leaking. We're past that point now in Minnesota. We know how to, we know how to peep that, but, but he was okay with that 250 feet?
How many feet is that total off the shoreline?
Well, it'd be six, seventh, 20 approximately.
We go any further, we're gonna be in front of them other people's houses.
250 feet does, there's a tree line over to the east before those houses, so.
Yeah.
And it moves away from the entrance of the park.
I make a motion that we okay with John's 250 feet.
And the, the additional eight? To include the additional eight that were recommended to you with these findings?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion? We have a motion?
I'll second that, I got another question and that has to do with the crosswalk. What type of crosswalk was proposed or?
We didn't talk about that, it was just basically the crosswalk itself and signage? Is that what you recall Commissioner?
Yeah, it was that they, they ask Lakeview to maintain it and.
Commissioner Olkerson, you can obviously speak to that more than anybody in this room, so if you want to recommend one, a type?
Well, but is this a crosswalk painted, but then the city would be involved there too because from the shoreline east, it's the city. Shoreline west is township. So it's a joint.
Okay, I didn't understand that. We'd have to amend that?
City, city and the?
City and the township. If it's painted lines and signs, it wouldn't be a major thing. I think the city does a lot of their own painting the crosswalks and. But that'd be agreement between the city and the township if, oh, that would go forward, so.
We could add that if you'd like.
Correct.
Is that added into your motion and your second?
Yeah.
And further discussion and conversation with Lakeview Township again last night and they're in favor of the, this proposal?
So this is, this is coming out from 270th though, not off shore, south?
Completely off 270th.
There's no access to South Shore Drive?
Correct.
As, as we move forward, are we, is it allow, is allowable as this development moves forward and there will probably be an access to the housing, is this gonna be connected? Is this gonna be allowed to be connected?
I can't answer that, I, I don't know what the future development.
I'm just trying to think in the future how.
Right.
Sure wouldn't hurt to be.
No, well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about turning lanes. Are we going to, where's the, how is the traffic gonna get in there and turn? I mean. Are you, are you gonna have a turn lane? And if you have a turn lane, are you gonna have a bypass lane to go around traffic crossing? Now, I don't know if that road is the traffic count on that township road, but certainly if it was on, on South Shore Drive, you would, you would probably need both of those.
Yeah, and I think that'd be something that the city controls that portion of it.
Yeah, I think once the property is obviously built out, I don't, I don't know the exact number, but if, they're obviously gonna be much smaller lots than we allow, so if there's 100 homes there, I'm sure once it's built out or halfway through that a turn lane would probably be implemented there regardless.
Okay, any other questions or? Just, just to clarify, note the motion maker in second. You also included the recommendations that were included in the planning and zoning.
Yep.
And that was lighting reduced, garbage is be fenced, no lording signage, a four-foot continuous living structure, light deflectors, direct light downward, and, and the crosswalk. What are the other two previous ones?
That the.
Turn?
That it be turned 90 degrees, so it would be facing south and that none of the project would be located on that city park.
And this includes a, this is five acres? Total footprint of this?
That's what the proposal is, yes.
Okay, please put that in the, is that appropriate, five acre parcel?
Okay, just to be clear, can we do a minimum of five if they want more?
Minimum of five.
Okay.
Appropriate?
I don't think you'd want more, but just leave it that way.
Any other comments?
I'd just like to say that I still think even though we're pushing it back, it's going to cause issues with the neighborhood. That's just my, my opinion.
Yeah, I think it would be, it would be better suited, not for, for the, for the, for the area to be pushed off from 270th also. Because you have the park there and, and the, but without the, the applicant's not willing to do that, I'm not entertaining to try to push that because they're not, they don't want it, so. It is, according to their testimony though, it is not a destination. I mean, so it is for convenience, so if it's back another block, I don't think that convenience would be very much affected. That's my opinion, but if there's nothing else, any, wanna have anything of the board?
My, my own, my concern is the size of it. I think the, the size of the gas station for the community that it is proposed to be in, I think is large, I think 6,500 square feet and four pumps is. I mean, that's about the size of the all-in-all gas station in Freezy.
Are we, are we limiting them to their size once, if this gets approved? There's, this is their proposal, but there's no, there's no, they can, they can put in smaller or larger, correct?
Correct.
So that can, can we put stipulation of?
Certainly.
But what are you gonna gain? You're gonna, you know, if you're talking safety to make a small place and jam people in there.
Well, he's got, it's five acres.
He's got five acres there, so I, I would, I would not want to make it too small. That's not gonna make it any safer for sure. You know, certainly you don't want congestion at the pumps. And if they're gonna put money into it, we want to see them succeed, you know? We are, we are looking at economic development here in Becker County, so.
The other thing was, was just because of the noise of it, I would, I would put a stipulation of no car washes in the gas station.
Do you want to make, as the motion maker in second, approve of that, no car washes? Or do you, you accept that or not? Otherwise we'd make?
I don't have a problem with the, with the no car wash. I do have a problem with, I, I don't design gas stations and I don't know, you know, what it takes to make money with one, but I would certainly not want to limit the size.
I just want to be clear then, if that amendment, friendly amendment, otherwise we have to go through. Motion maker in second, it includes no car washes.
Yep.
So that motion second included that.
Yep.
Did you have something else you wanted to add?
John Lawrie again, on behalf of Jason Garrick, just regarding the size. You know, the size doesn't come from, I think, disturbing uses. A lot of times it's having sandwich shops or a Subway or a Caribou or that kind of thing in there. And I think those are an amenity that is positive for that community, both with the parks and people grabbing snacks or a sandwich going out on the lake or whatever it is. So, you know, I, I'd be hesitant on going just to directly address that.
Okay, any other discussion? Are you ready for a vote? Okay, we'll, we'll take a vote. I'm gonna ask just a regular roll call and then roll call after we vote, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
We'll take a roll call then, John?
Aye.
Erica?
Aye.
Dave?
Nay.
Barry, nay? Richard?
Aye.
It has been approved, three to two with conditions. And those conditions were read and I think it was 250 back, feet back from the former, former proposal. And with the conditions, the planning and zoning board went with.
And the car wash.
And the car wash.
Excuse me. With that, we have another item after this that we're gonna discuss. You're free to stay. If you exit, please exit quietly. Thank you for, for your input and thank you for your time. Say ma'am, we are, we are in, ma'am, we are in session still, we have another item.
No, he's just doing his job, he doesn't own the gas station.
Where's the next one on?
Thank you.
It is.
Is it number four?
It's the one on County Road 40. Daniel Lake. Oh, I'm there.
Although this is, oh, it's past us.
I think it's the, it was before that. The gas station last.
Minaga, County Road 40, oh, there it is.
Alright. We have one more item. Under zoning. Conditional use permit to operate commercial building with retail sales and service in Wolf Lake Township. Ask you that are still in the room to please be quiet or take your, take your conversations outside this room, please, if you want to continue talking. Okay, the next item.
Yes, as you just stated, commercial, the, the individual owns a electrical company and as well as selling irrigation equipment. So the proposal is commercial building, retail sales, recommendation to approve?
I'm on the wrong.
It's on page 60 of 91. Number five on.
I'm on the wrong packet. I was on the other. Is this David Lake?
Uh, Daniel.
Sorry, it is Daniel. Daniel, is Daniel Lake here?
I don't believe it.
No, I don't think so.
Probably, probably was here but couldn't stay.
I'll make a motion to approve that conditional use permit.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Any other business to be brought before us? No, and we don't have any work session today, thankfully.
We have that.
Doing? Kyle?
Quick compliance update if you want.
If it's like a minute under.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it was on the agenda, I know, I heard Pat touch on it earlier. Did you guys take any action with appointing yourselves?
Yep.
We considered it part of planning and zoning committee.
Yeah, okay.
We did also say though that we would like to post these meetings so all commissioners can attend.
Okay.
Just in case, I.
Sure.
At some point someone, we're going to have more than two commissioners somewhere.
No problem, and just so you're aware, they are a team's option, that's how they'll be for now. Just real quick, simple, we met Pat, myself, Jim, Commissioner Olkerson. Public engagement is gonna begin as early as October. The first phase of this is to educate the public on the planning process, gather their input to identify issues and opportunities. At that time, we'll be establishing these stakeholder groups. There was a long list in there that will be farmers, environmental groups, large employers, small employers, just the community in a whole. They did say they want to get working on the ordinance itself and the subdivision ordinance immediately, so that's gonna be, I thought that was great. Summer of 2024, they'll present that draft plan and what they learned and seek public feedback from that. And then the hope would be to hold further open houses and public hearings during the summer fall of 24 and get it adopted.
How are they going to attract people to give input?
We talked about some surveys, we talked about social media, we talked about using the township. I can't remember that acronym.
Are you gonna be speaking at the township thing October 19th? Pat, do you know, do you know if he's speaking?
He won't be, but I would like him.
I, I think that would be. Yeah, Roger, I think you should be there just to touch base with this, this and, and get, at least get them knowledgeable to know where, what they should.
Right. So, and we'll hold some meetings, in, in-person meetings in different geographical areas of the county, you know? But.
Alright, anything else, Kyle?
No, sir.
Jerry, got anything? Yes, sir.
Just plenty of useless information. But Don, the lady talked about the museum, the bussing and the kids. Like she could benefit recognition of Chris and Charlie Daggett and everybody. The need for transportation came up, Fred Daggett was a street, was by a children living in Montana. Put his motorcycle in the back of an empty trailer, went out to Billy's with the truck, got on the motorcycle and spent a week visiting his children. When he came back to Becker County, he came with the truck, trailer, motorcycle and the art collection. And I just asked him this morning, are you charging? And they said, no, we're gonna call it an expensive vacation.
Well, thank you. And I, and I think Becky did relay that to us, so I wanna, I wanna, but we didn't recognize it. Nate, and, and hopefully you guys give some recognition. I do also know that Daggett Truck Line, when we were talking about the Ice Palace years ago in partnership with, with St. Paul, and that did, that fell through, but they were, they were going to comp, probably not completely free, but they were looking at trucking at a very, you know, they were, they were being asked to do it for free, but you know, fuel prices for that many ice blocks going down there was quite expensive. But they were willing, they stepped up then too, so. Thank you for mentioning that and thanks Daggett Truck Line for, for bringing that museum to Becker County. So, thank you.
Alright.
We are, everything else?
I'm gonna make a quick with you guys.
Where's Jaren?